Okay, this is a special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of New Canaan, Connecticut in the form of a meeting of the Plan of Conservation and Development Subcommittee. Today is Tuesday, excuse me, Wednesday, February 7, 2024. I will commence by calling the role. Commissioner Benton. Commissioner Herring. Commissioner Nielsen.
Here.
Commissioner Radman.
Here.
And Commissioner Chris here. So we do have a quorum. We have three people. And so Commissioner Radman, you will be seated for Commissioner Turner. Okay. We'd be. Agenda this public meeting. Item number one, discussion with consultant SLR on the draft community vision statement and other next steps in plan development. Okay, we'll start with that. When we turn over to Mr. Collins. Sir, you have the floor.
Make sure your computer is muted.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I just need to pull the talk to myself. Can everybody hear me okay? My coming across okay? Way too far from the mic.
You're good. You can ask your colleagues on Zoom if they can hear you.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, great. Sorry. To go through so many hoops here to get the presentation up. So I think we're there. And then let's.
I need to share your screen.
Am I sharing the right screen?
Yep, looks like it.
It would seem so.
Okay. Just making sure everybody can see and everybody can hear me. Okay. It's a pleasure to be in front of you all again tonight. I'm Robert Collins with a sub consultant working with the town on the POCD. We're with SLR. Also joining me tonight is Julio Fiore, Fiore, and also Taylor Daigle. And we're each going to kind of go through a couple of different aspects of our quick presentation to you tonight. What we want to talk about tonight specifically is we want to follow up on our conversation that we started last month as we were beginning to get to the point of transitioning from our listening and gathering and analyzing stage of the first six months of the project. As we start to move now into the plan development phase. And based on what you had mentioned to us at that meeting, as well as talking a little bit further with Sarah, she thought it would be beneficial for us to kind of go through kind of the very detailed schedule of going through the plan development. You know, over the next couple of months, and then also kind of going through the detail of the required like review process. So hopefully, I'm going to go through that in a series of slides. We're going to start with that. And then we're going to turn our attention after we go through that and answer any questions that you may have. We're going to then turn our attention to Julia that is going to talk about the community vision that we shared with you that we worked on and developing it with Sarah. We'll kind of go through it point by point to kind of give you kind of a broad overview. Give you another week or so to continue to forward any comments back to us. And then lastly, we'll wrap up with Taylor kind of going through a summary of the edits that we made based off of all of your comments that we received on the community profile. And then that will pretty much hopefully bring the community profile existing conditions phase to a conclusion. So we can march forward very quickly into the planned development phase. Okay. So looking at the schedule just very broadly, we.
Robert, sorry, could you?
Slide show. Sorry, slide show is a little bigger.
Yeah, how's that? Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
I thought I pushed that before, but it didn't take for some reason. Okay, so what is in front of you right now? And we'll break it down in a little bit more detail, but this is kind of just an overview slide. And it's probably hard to see, but this is, we put the whole entire schedule into a Gantt chart so that we could chart it very carefully.
Good.
And as you can see on the left side, well, all the way on the far left side, you know, we have like the project initiation, which is 100% complete. We have the community profile and existing conditions, which were, you know, just about 99%. So therefore, we're ready to go through the next four major phases of the project, which would be the draft plan, community vision, first up with the, that's the first step in the draft plan. Then development of goals, strategies, and action steps. Then putting together the draft plan itself. And then finally, the final plan and the adoption phase.
A question, sir, if I may.
Sure.
On the draft plan, goals, strategies, and actions, I assume, I'm assuming actions are sort of implementation plan or implementation phase? Or am I misunderstanding?
Well, the action steps, I mean, obviously, the implementation table would be part of the draft plan.
Okay.
And most of that implementation, the way we would set it up for you, or at least from the examples, and we would share that and get some feedback. But we would have the implementation set up by the goal, the strategies, and then the action steps would be the very detailed part of that. And that would all come out after we have the actions in that one step. And then that would be part of the draft plan and obviously the final plan.
Thank you.
Okay, so as we are moving into the development stage, first up, as I've already mentioned, is the development of the community vision and themes. SLR, as well as with Sarah, we have been working behind the scenes of developing that vision, formulating it based on review of the community survey, the community open house, the dialogues that you guys had in November and December, and then also looking at existing documents. And we will, you know, we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. Tonight, as you can see, is the 7th of February. So we're, we're here meeting, having a subcommittee meeting, and we're in the draft review stage for the vision statement. We're going to go through that a little bit more detail with you and then also give you another week to give us any comments. That would then lead to a public review of the community vision statement and themes. And we would, we're suggesting that that would start at the end of February, and that would go until the early part of March. And we're suggesting, and we talked about this with Sarah today, is that we think that it would be a virtual public review would, would be what we would be suggesting, similar to how we did the community survey. So in other words, we would post it on the story map. We would create a, like a special link on the story map, all about the community vision. And that would give us an opportunity to kind of explain like, you know, what we heard, how we crafted it. And then like kind of go through each theme in a little bit more detail and then give approximately three weeks for folks to log on to the website, take a look at it, and then possibly answer maybe some survey questions that could be embedded into that virtual engagement activity, as well as like our actual comments that they may want.
Who would that be open to?
Well, because this would be public, so this would be open to everybody. It's just like the, the story map is available to the full public and the survey was too. Because, you know, during the survey, you guys had such a robust, you know, ability to communicate and get the word out about taking the survey. We thought we could use some of those same channels to get the word out about the community vision and solicit, you know, have a three week window. We could solicit that type of feedback. We will, we can talk about that a little bit more when we talk about the community vision, but that's kind of like what we're initially proposing as far as the gates are for that.
So the format for the, call it public review, point number, bullet point number three, this would be in person or virtual or both? Mostly virtual or what?
Well, what we're proposing is virtual.
Okay.
But, and that's why, you know, we, but you know, if you want to have it like posted in town hall or something like that, we could certainly figure out ways that somebody is not able to log in, that they might be able to look at it. First stop by the, you know, Sarah's office or and maybe take a look at it and supply some comments as well.
So I understand that the points is that point number two is sub community review. That's us now.
Right.
And that's us coming to a meeting of minds on sort of a draft presented to the public.
Right.
That would be the public, the public, it would be posted, the public would have a chance to read it, digest it, reflect on it, discuss it. The public review would be a more robust interchange with the subcommittee. You would take that commentary and input in and then. Point number four, finalize the vision statements and the themes. Is that?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct. Sorry, I just wanted to add, there is, you know, I think you're seeing that like community workshop too. So that's, that's a placeholder and that can, you know, we can have like a virtual workshop, which is what, what Robert was describing. But it just sort of falls within that, that public review of, of the vision. That's just a placeholder, but it falls within that other purple bar.
Okay.
And we wouldn't, you know, obviously, we want to share, that's why we're sharing with it, with it, the community vision statement and the themes with you now. Because we definitely want to make sure that you're comfortable with the, the themes as well as the vision statement before we would share it with the public to get to solicit their feedback. And our hope is that, you know, we're, you know, we're hitting, you know, we're hitting a lot of the points that we all heard and that we know about the community. So we're hoping that there will be a lot of concurrence with the vision statement and then maybe, with the exception of maybe some word adjustments or further, there might need to be some further explanation if we don't cover it in our, you know, our virtual platform that we would create as far as like what topics would flow into each theme area if it's not obvious. You know, somebody might say, well, where would we talk about, you know, sidewalks or traffic congestion or something like that? And we could certainly respond to those types of questions or clarify that if it wasn't obvious.
I would think that some of those points would be more likely be points that would flow from the vision statement. The vision statements are like the preamble of the constitution, set of general ideas and themes. The detail would flow from that in.
Right.
Other parts of the document. Is this my understanding?
Yeah, the very next step. Because, you know, we want to make sure that we have comfortability on having a clear understanding of what the themes are going to be. So that in the next step, which I can go to.
I just asked one more question about the public review. Because when you first said doing it virtually, I couldn't get my head around it, but as you explained it, it makes more sense. But I guess what I'm thinking is you're not really looking for people to kind of redline this draft. I mean, you'll be asking people, are we on track? Like, do you like where we're headed?
Right.
Do you have any specific comments? But you're not looking for people to, you know, old school, literally like change this word, capitalize that, you know?
Some will try.
I'm just wondering, for those people that like to do that, how does that happen?
Well, it will be available through the website and there'll be comments. And so people could potentially like, you know, copy it, you know, print it out or something like that. And then they could submit that as an attachment to a comment or something like that.
But how is it, is it going to be a fixed series of someone's going to log in and check out the draft document? Is it then at the conclusion of their review, it'll say proceed to next step? And then there will be 20 questions, yes or no questions as to whether it's on target, if it's not on target, as well as the very last element will be a comment section? Is that how you envision it or is it going to function differently?
I think that's pretty close to what we were suggesting, although I don't know if we would have quite that many questions.
It might be fewer.
Right. And we probably would want to phrase the questions and we could work very carefully with Sarah and she could also, we could, you know, exchange the, the ideas like through email or something like that to fine tune the actual. And we could also share with you a draft of the, of the story map page, you know, that would host the vision statement. So you could get a full understanding of like, you know, that it's going to explain like, what is a community vision statement? You know, this is the first step, you know, goals, strategies, and actions will follow. And then this is the, the community vision statement that the subcommittee, as well as the consultants and the town staff have put together based on what we heard. And we probably would want to have a couple of positive questions to ask right off the bat, you know, you know, so that people focus on, you know, you know, is this meeting, you know, the expectation, your expectations? Those types of things, maybe some really specific questions rather than just saying like, what are your comments? Because if we just say, what are your comments? Then we might get the situation where people just start to redline it. And obviously, if we get like 100 responses, it will be hard to, how do we? So we'll probably try to keep it, and hopefully there'll be a lot of positive comments about that since we'll be hitting a lot of the the theme ideas that we heard and, you know, that people probably say, oh, yes, what I was looking for is going to be in this theme.
Well, the point I would make the observation, Mr. Collins, that given your experience with our community survey, you should expect a robust response.
Right. And that, and that would be great.
Just saying. Buckle up.
But we'll have to like share it all with you as well. And then we'll, you know, have to make decisions, but hopefully most.
Understood.
You know, at the end of the day, if, if it feels that this virtual platform of over three weeks is maybe not hitting the target, we could, we could talk about having it like an open house instead, where we would share it if it become a person and review it and then share. We just thought that the virtual platform might have a reach more people and could solicit more positive feedback on it.
My expectation is that even just for sake of, for lustre purposes, if there is a significant in-person component, that you would still have a large number of people zooming in. Because there may be, don't like to travel at night or they're elderly or they're away and so forth. Many people in New Canaan travel a great deal for business and so forth. So my, my own sense, commissioners, is that probably a virtual only may be best.
Yeah.
Virtual's fun. Okay.
What you come up with, if it can work, I think it's a great idea.
Save that green light.
We could put a lot of information into the, you know, the explanation of the development of it, which I think might answer a lot of folks' questions. And then hopefully we could craft with Sarah's help and then also sharing with you a couple of positive type of questions on asking for reinforcement. And then at the very end, like if somebody wants to actually supply like, you know, adjustments to words, please submit them, you know, through the last, last option.
Understood. Thank you.
So following this, you know, this procedure predict developing the community vision, it all went as planned. We would then have about in middle of March, we would have a finalized draft of the community vision. And we would then, you know, we would obviously incorporate and look for crucial things that we're seeing from the community feedback. We would share that with Sarah and then we would share it with you all so that you could feel comfortable that, you know, we're adjusting it that based on any comments that we might be seeing and then finalize it.
Question, view of my ignorance. So the fourth point, final community vision statement with themes. That is something you would synthesize based on what we do tonight and what is heard at the public review. And then you would send it to us. It would not be a separate, you were envisioning it not being a separate POCD subcommittee meeting? Or am I misunderstanding?
No, I don't think it would be a separate one. It would be more of like, we would be, you know, because again, we're anticipating that there'll be a lot of positive feedback on it and some good suggestions and that they will be easy to integrate and that we could, you know, we would then be sharing it back with you through Sarah.
So the public review would be virtual. Zoom. The final community statement would be based on all the other input you would provide it to us. We would, we, the subcommittee would provide edits, comments, thoughts, and those would be incorporated in the final document. Is that what I understand, sir?
And then we are proposing a March meeting, but you won't see it until the next slide. And at that March meeting, we would be, you know, starting to focus then on the goal, strategies and working with you. And then we could regroup on the community vision statement if we needed to, if we got some really good ideas that we felt that we needed to flesh out with you.
So.
That could potentially happen at the March meeting, have our proposal.
There'd be a late March meeting post this one.
That's correct.
So we would have us, we, the subcommittee would have a final bite at the apple after this, if necessary, in a meeting such as this.
That's correct.
Got it. Thank you.
And actually from.
Does seem reasonable, Commissioner? Good. Okay, thank you.
Basically, every month between now and the end of May, we're, or until May, we're proposing having at least one meeting a month with you.
Just to, just to repeat for the seventh time, we want to ensure that all deadlines are made, that anything that needs to be included in it is included.
Right.
So I'll just put down the record again.
Right. And that's also the reason why we want to go through this schedule in detail. And that we also are, you know, we're trying to do some of the things that you'll see and we'll talk about, but just in case I forget to mention is that in crafting this schedule, we did look at the original schedule that we proposed to you. And that, you know, the completion of the draft plan by June, as well as taking in consideration that summertime would be coming and there would be some, you know, folks would be leaving town. And obviously, sometimes there's not, you know, town council doesn't need. So we tried to adjust, as you'll see when we get through this a little bit, that we were taking all that into consideration. And we know that everything is subject to some slight modification, but this initial real focus on the draft plan development is focused on like our original plan of action with you.
When you, when you've issued the draft plan, will that also have the first stab at things like recommendations on potential rezoning, areas of development in town? All of the really key hot button issues that this town is going to be looking for? Or is that going to be further in the process? I just want to make sure that we allot, that we, that we get to that, that point of issuing a draft of that version early enough? Because there's probably going to be a lot of discussion, a lot of iterations back and forth on what that, you know, what that future plan for zoning implications is.
Definitely. I mean, we have to have, I mean, you'll, let's walk through this and these other steps and you'll see.
I would like to reiterate that Commissioner Radman's comment, once the rubber meets the road on some of the recommendations, there will be a robust public response. So just letting you know.
And the, and the thing you have to remember that you'll see here is that while we have, you know, a specific schedule between now and developing the draft plans, remember that, that, you know, what is included in addition is a 65 day review period at a minimum that will happen over the summertime. So there will be a very lengthy opportunity for folks to continue to review in addition to at a workshop that we're proposing in May, as well as, you know, it being posted online and having feedback through comment opportunities. But then there will also be the entire summer period.
We just have, we just have to be careful of posting the, the information for public review prior to the summer period. The, the death knell in this town, and it happens a lot, is big key issues that are very contested in this town somehow find their way onto meeting agendas between July 1st and August 31st, when half this town is gone for vacation.
Yeah, I've gone over that with them. So.
Okay.
It's in the schedule.
Got it. Okay.
That would be a good time to avoid weighty matters.
As long as we issue something by June 1st, for example.
You know, and as Robert will go over with like the goal is like nothing will get adopted until September.
That's fine. That's fine.
There will be, exactly. And we're, like I said before, we're well aware of that. And it did, there is a lot of different things that we're kind of trying to juggle. And this is just what we're proposing on base of what we, we heard. As we turn up, go through each one of these steps, if we, if things get pushed out or something like that or need to speed up.
Yep.
You know, we're here and ready to be flexible and interact with you. And, you know, so hopefully, you know, talk to you about this in more detail, we can certainly, that's why we're sharing with you. So we can make modifications if we need to, or just wait and see how we start to progress through these first parts and then see where we are. And, you know, what the town really wants to do as far as like a lengthy review process.
Okay.
Okay.
Please.
Okay, so once we make it through the community vision and theme development phase, part two of the development of the plan would then be going into starting to develop strategies and action steps. Now those two main things are going to be, be, you know, we're going to be pulling things from the existing plan that will need to be moved forward. And we'll start to align them under the theme areas that have then been concurred with, with the completion of the community vision and theme, obviously. Behind the scenes, we in, in late mid February and into early March, when the community vision is being reviewed by you as well as the public, we're going to be working on with Sarah, starting to align some of those initial goals and strategies with the theme areas. But then in March, we're proposing a subcommittee meeting in mid to late March. As you can see, I think right now we have it in the, in the schedule, the week of the 18th. I think it would be like the March 20th would be a Wednesday of that particular week. And so that would be the week where we would come back together, as I mentioned before, where we would have a March meeting. If we needed to talk about anything with the community vision, we could do it at that meeting. But the hope is, is that that can be part one, but definitely the most important part of that meeting will be for us to share. And Sarah will share it with you in advance, the initial draft goals and strategies that are aligning with the theme of the vision. These will be initial and there was definitely the lengthy process to develop them even further. But we'll be sharing with you the initial goals and themes. We will also be giving you, you know, from giving those, those initial review of the actual strategies in mid-March, you know, we will give you until probably the end of March or around April 1st to kind of get any like feedback or comments or digest them and get it back to us. That would then lead into what we would have a series of a day or two days, depending on how it gets scheduled, but what we call the roundtable meetings. And this is where we bring the community vision as well as the goals and the themes, as well as with the, the initial goals and strategies. And we sit down in a series of meetings that you are all welcome to attend, but we coordinate with Sarah where we talk with the town officials to get their understanding of like the vision and like themes and goals and things that they're doing. So we can start to make some linkages with what they're doing and making sure that they're connected with the POCD. And it's starting to be the development of the action steps.
That is bullet point three, correct?
That's correct. So.
Which, which groups would you intend to meet with?
Well, the list would, you know, we would have to work on that very closely with Sarah. But, you know, internally, it would definitely be, you know, public works, engineer, town engineer. And again, I don't have your list, so you might have some slightly different names, but definitely park and recreation. And even if that's split, like if we need to talk to somebody about park and park maintenance, they, they would be invited. If we need to talk about somebody about recreation programming, that would be a separate one. Libraries, you know, historic resources and the historic commission, or somebody from the historic commission. Finance, talking about grants and, you know, things related to the grant list and stuff like that. And the CIP for the town, because we want to make sure that those linkages are starting to be met. You know, this is where we really, and then we, we share a lot of information with them. We usually start about a month in advance where Sarah or some other official from the town would send out on that. You know, we would first compile the list and we would share it with you with everybody we're going to talk with. We would probably a month in advance, send out a notification letter that says, hey, we're going to be talking with you soon. Does this date work for you? We will be sending more information in the, in the coming weeks. And what we would send to them in the coming weeks is we would send them the vision statement that's been finalized, as well as some of those initial goals and strategies that might relate to their subject matter. We also would invite various boards and commissions to come to the meetings. We would not go to their meetings, but we would, because there's so many, certainly there might be some way that there might be ongoing conversations with them. But we would want them to talk amongst themselves and then either forward to, to Sarah and us information about what their, some of their ideas might be or for you to consider. Or if they're able, one of their members might be able to actually attend the roundtable meetings. We could certainly make sure that there was a slot for them and we could meet with them as well as if anybody from the subcommittee, one to 10.
We should also get a DPW weighing in on this.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They're probably one of the biggest groups that we talk with. And maybe if we need to talk to several different, you know, section leaders or something like that, utilities, waste management, sidewalks, engineering and all that. So they're usually one of the biggest transportation, road maintenance and all that type of stuff.
We don't have a utilities commission anymore, do we?
Yeah, we do. We just got one.
Yeah.
I would suggest, I don't know, brought down my own mind dump on some groups to mention and to, I would say, the Board of Education. Gimi, Board of Selectmen, Town Engineer, Public Works, you might be to meet with them together.
Yeah.
Parks and Recs, certainly.
Yeah.
I also suggest Health and Human Services.
Sure.
As a specific one. And the Historic District Commission, perhaps with someone from the Historical Society joining. The finance people here, since we got to pay for everything at some point. Town Council. Town councils, because they're one of the legislative bodies and many of the things would need to be passed by them. It's not our purview. I would also suggest TDAC, that's the Economic Development Group. I think that would be a good one.
And again, we, we haven't had an official list yet, but we will. Yep. And again, we, we haven't had an official list yet, but we will send it out. We will confirm that we didn't miss anything.
And that's the utilities commission too. How do we envision engaging all these people? Is it going to be? Are we going to ask them to come here and do an evening meeting and give their input? I don't think it's gonna happen.
Most of, most of those people are staff. So I think it would just be S L R coming during business hours.
During business hours. But are we? But is S L R going to be meeting with each team individually?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. So that's why we, it's usually, and, and we have some flexibility in case like with some of the boards and not having anybody that can attend like during the daytime, but we, you know, so, you know, we would either, in some towns where we've done this elsewhere, we started like at nine o'clock in the morning. We have like half hour slots. You know, we have like a three hour window in the morning and then like a three hour window in the afternoon. So that we can kind of make it through all of the staff or and or the boards and commissions that may want to come. We can also potentially schedule it like in the afternoon for town staff and then maybe in the very early evening. Um, if, you know, somebody from a board wants to come, but they can't come until like six o'clock or something like that. Uh, we, um, we also allow, obviously if people aren't able to come, but they want to forward, you know, Sarah, a list of their priorities and without committing to the meeting, that would certainly be okay too, especially for some groups that may only have a smaller role to play, um, in potential uh, ideas like say the libraries, the library staff or something like that.
The library staff is, is a private charity. Just to note here, it's not municipal.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, just, it's partly paid for by the town, but it's a private charity. Um, would this be, these be hybrid meetings or these all be in person?
I mean, for the, uh, most likely they would be in person, but again, we have some flexibility. We'd also like to invite, um, you know, anybody from the subcommittee that may want to attend. Um, and if, if, if you're able to join by like a, um, you know, through computer in the room that we set up so that we can have these roundtable meetings on that would be totally, uh, you know, that would be a great idea.
Excellent.
And we certainly have like somebody is removed. Um, from some of the, one of the commissions, for instance, maybe they're at work, but they can take a lunch break. You know, and we could certainly maybe meet with them like on a virtual meeting. So we try to be as flexible as possible, but it's usually a really interesting, you know, day, a lot of, a lot of stuff is coming at us, but at the same time, we're well prepared. Um, and it's, it's, it's interesting to get, um, all the feedback. And in most cases, uh, we get a lot of positive feedback from all the different boards and commissions as well as uh, department heads that say, oh, I wasn't even invited last time and all that type of stuff, you know, I'm glad to be able to have some input. So, so that's going to be a, a really robust, uh, day or day and a half. And that really is going to be focused on like starting to look at the action steps. Um, so we will have a good understanding of the draft of goals and strategies. And then this is really where we'll start to get a lot of the action steps. Again, we will also be working behind the scenes to bring action steps forward from your existing plan that we need to carry forward or that we're suggesting to carry forward. And then we'll be looking at our, our deep library of, you know, possible other options for subjects that maybe haven't that have come up, but you didn't have incorporated into your plan before, so that we have a lot of, uh, action ideas for you to consider. Um, actions also, uh, usually take the form of two different types of things where one may be a very specific action or it may end up being more like a policy. Uh, we usually like to craft it in a way so that if it's a more of a policy statement, that it ends up acting like an action step. But it is possible that in that, that, that category, we could have actions and policies and we'll review that with you once we get to that, that part. Uh, but they would, you know, they would flow very closely underneath of having a goal, the strategy, and then those series of actions and or, uh, policy statements.
This, the slide that we posted on the P O C D website, you're prepared?
Yes. After every one of our subcommittee meetings with you, we do post the, um, the presentation on.
Thank you. I'll be sure. Thank you.
Um, so just to conclude this, as you can see, after we have those roundtable meetings and we have, we'll, we share some information with you through email and also further discussion with Sarah. We would, um, assume that we by the, uh, middle, like around the twentieth of April, we would have a final, but only of a draft of the goals, strategies and actions. And that would allow us to then go to the next step, which will involve, um, the public. So then that we would get into the actual draft plan stage. So we're working behind the scenes right now and we will over the next couple of months on actually starting to put together the draft plan. Starting to look at the, the format, um, the layout. But also, you know, some aspects of like the community profile, we can start to put that, start to put that into some words. So we're actually working behind the scenes right now on developing some of the basics of the plan.
Um, one, one point here that, um, we mentioned, or it was brought up at the last, um, P O C D meeting is that, um, I suggested that we might, we did have this in the pri- first one, ten years ago. The O C D was a, uh, photography contest for people in town to generate photography, trying to get, you know, buy-in and participation and so forth. And so, um, moving with Sarah on dates. We have this.
We, I, I mentioned this this morning. So it seems like probably we'll have to, we'll launch it soon. And then we'll have to end it probably early with May.
Fair enough.
For incorporation.
I think that's a really, that's a wonderful idea. I really like it.
And so one of the things I was thinking also, and I'm sure this, I was thinking this, uh, so let me know your thoughts, fellow commissioners, is that, um, we would each pick, uh, some photographs that we thought would be best for the front cover and for the chapter headings. We put those together and then as a committee sort of decide those. Um, and then we would, um, maybe, uh, I asked Sarah about the possibility of, you know, printing up certificates to the winners and have it a little event here. Try to generate some, some positive vibes. So what do you, what do you think about that? Okay. And so these would be for some of the main photographs, not every photograph. Well, for example, um, the, there'd be a cover photograph, uh, there would be also photographs for some of the chapter headings. And I think that's correct, Mr. Collins, probably. And so we as a commission would do that. There may be other photographs which we would defer to S L R and Sarah.
But when you say we as a commission would do it, how are we doing it?
So we would each pick the ones we think should be on the cover and so forth.
Like we're going out and taking them?
No, you wouldn't take them, but you know, the ones that are submitted, you would look at them and say, well, I think this is the cover photo. We would each have our choices. We would put them together and then as a subcommittee, we would sort of pick one from the ones we've chosen. One possible thing is just to reach with rank everyone's choices. Going to be anonymous who made the choices and would be anonymous who submitted the photographs. We don't want any bias. And then we could use that as a ranking system and then boil it down to maybe two and choose between two has been five is a possibility, but essentially make it a little more special for some of the major photographs. And make and provide, uh, you know, certificates and so on. It's a nice photo op and community event. Let's see, that was my thought. Fair enough.
Yeah. I mean, I'm fine with S L R handling it on their own too, but I see what you're trying to do. So.
A little more kind of up, up the ante a bit.
Figure out the details later, you know.
But anyway.
The results of that, um, or giving out the certificates could be incorporated into the, um, you know, community open house workshop that we're proposing in May. But we share the, um,
Okay.
the, uh, the draft goals and one of, at that open house, we would have several, you know, we'd have a station set up for each. Kind of jumping ahead, but we would have a station set up for each one of the theme areas and then people would be able to review the goals and strategies. And they'd have an activity of, you know, uh, suggesting additional action steps and things like that. But there could also be a station related to the layout of the plan, of the plan, as well as then this photograph. Um, process that you've had and that could be incorporated into that, um, community event.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. So just to kind of, kind of continue along with the draft plan, um, similar to Ma- March, we would have a meeting, um, around the week of the twenty second of April, um, with you. And at that meeting, you know, we would, uh, discuss, you know, the, the, um, the phrase, you know, what we're proposing as far as the framework or the table of contents of the plan. And then in addition, we would then review the goals that have been assigned to each one of the, um, theme areas as well as the strategies. Um, we will get that to you a couple of days in advance of the meeting, uh, through Sarah. And then we will give you like another couple of weeks to kind of take a look at that after we introduce it at that meeting around April, um. Uh, actually, I think I said seventeenth, but I think it would actually be more like the twenty second. But that date, well, we can, well, you know, we know there might need to be some adjustments. But then we, and then we would also want to talk about then, you know, going to that next community event, uh, which we could certainly will, you know, we'll start to talk about that with Sarah earlier. And then through email, we can also start to finalize some of the details. But at that April meeting, we would want to kind of, you know, close those details out. And then make sure that we're all set and prepared for the community review of the, um, uh, proposed layout of the plan as well as the proposed theme areas, uh, goals and those, uh, actions and the initial. I'm sorry, the goals, strategies and the guidelines and stuffs.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, I think I follow that. So that makes a lot of sense. So thank you. Um, uh, two quick follows before we, I think, move too far on. I just want to understand. And I apologize if you already explained this. So the granularity of the action steps, uh, and the implementation steps, I think you mentioned in previous conversations, you know, an implementation plan coming off of the P O C D and action step. And I wasn't sure. You know, for example, as an action step, convening a new commission or evaluating a rezoning or creating a master plan. I just was trying to figure out or creating a, a specific fund. So are those action steps? All of the above, or are they more general sort of next step, sort of sub projects that was spawned off of the P O C D?
I think they can take a, like a lot of different, action steps could take a lot of different, uh, directions. You know, there could be, like I had mentioned, there could be like just linkages to, you know, continue to support the sidewalk expansion program of the Department of Public Works type of thing. Um, you could also potentially include your desired inclusions into that sidewalk program or something like that, you know, with emphasis on sidewalks being added to Main Street in this location or something like that. Um, you may also have an action step that says, you know, seek grant funding for the development of this park improvement project or something like that, that is supported by the park and rec department. You may have something that says, continue to review applicant, you know, site plan applications subject to consistency with the, uh, P O C D. Um, you know, so I'm trying to give you that the sense that all the action sets can take a lot of different approach. But they will actually come out in this process of where we're identifying the, the goals, the strategies and the various actions. And then we will take those actions that have already been developed as a, as a very last task. And we will develop, put them into an implementation table that has like the responsible, um, entity. Um, you know, is it a short term, long term goal? And is it more of a policy or an action step type of a thing? And that will actually be like a matrix that's part of the plan so that you can have a better understanding of like, who's going to be responsible for leading that effort?
Yeah, um, Robert, and I, I just want to jump in. Uh, so it sounds like the, uh, subcommittee, it sounds like it would be helpful for us to like further break out implementation into the schedule, I think. Just so it's clear, you know, where that happens in the process and that we've, you know, ensure we've set aside enough time for that implementation, uh, step. Cause if I recall last, I believe last month we talked about, um, that you wanted to have time to really, uh, that you, that you, uh, anticipated that it would take some time to get concurrence on the implementation plan, right?
I'm, I'm, uh, that's fun. That's open to me. I, I think it's helpful here. The granular nature of the action steps and kind of, it sounds like the action steps can take kind of a micro approach of, hey, let's put some more money into the train station or something more macro, like we need to revisit our entire zoning. Um, it sounds like they kind of span the spectrum of
Right.
micro to macro and short to long term. So that's what was confusing to me. So it sounds like that bucket of action steps is both. I had two other questions for you. With regard to the roundtables, one of the things that you'd mentioned earlier was the notion of, of sort of having a singular day where people can get that access or bite at the apple. One of the things I've noticed is that, um, a lot of people come to the conversation with varying degrees of background on the process. And I could see how some of those conversations could kind of dive into specific topics that prevent you from kind of moving to the macro, uh, discussion. And I was curious, you, you described something like a, like a pre-work of sorts that you distribute to those participants to kind of set out the goals and sort of discuss, okay, this is how we got there. Um, to kind of almost say right before you show up, um, please take an effort to kind of understand the context. Is that what I understood there? You. Okay.
That's correct. And we would work closely with Sarah on that because we know that different department heads or, um, section leaders and things like that. And then also commission members of different Texas boards and commissions or the town council, they may have, you know, various different, uh, understandings or already contact with Sarah on this. And so we'd want to talk about, you know, that with her carefully to determine what the best approach would be. You know, even with grouping, uh, certain boards or staff together because they might have some synergy. You know, like for instance, if you had an economic development director for the town, it would probably be good for them to sit in on like, you know, when the chairman of the economic development commission comes in.
Similar, similar to the way we did the open houses. I, I, okay. That's helpful. And then the last question I had for you was just, um, you mentioned the bank of ideas, the library of ideas. And so what I heard you say there was that you have sort of a, a library of, of interesting ideas and concepts that you kind of pick from depending on the goals of the P O C D. Um, and I think someone asked earlier, kind of the question that I often ask to myself, like, we don't know what we don't know. And are there points in the process where a subject matter expert, like, you know, when we did the, the R F P with your team.
Right.
You had a series of experts come in here, Holly, um, Noah, some others sort of
Right.
give this very sort of sweeping spectrum of this is what you could do, this is what you could do. You could take no action, you could take a very severe action. Is there a? Where does that come in?
Well, when we start to like behind the scenes, as I said, we're, we're starting to, when we get to that phase where we start to develop the goals and then strategies. You know, we will be working behind the scenes with all of this, our, you know, our staff, including our subject matter experts. When we propose based on their recommendation for something that might be related to say climate resilience and they're, you know, looking at our, you know, making the suggestions to us, including Sarah, um, through our, in, you know, our internal channels. You know, we will lay out like a series of what we think would be appropriate, uh, goal and strategies. And that comes back to you. If you, when you see that, if you feel like you need more information or as we start to move forward, if we know that this particular, uh, goal has been a need to have more explanation. You know, that's where we would talk about maybe having like a virtual session possibly with the subcommittee to kind of go through that particular subject in more detail. Um, to answer maybe more questions that you might have.
Um, so that's in the subcommittee review? Is that where that fits in?
Uh, yes. So at this point, well, that would, we would have to go back to this one. So again, during that period of time of looking at the, um, goal, strategies and action steps from like late March into early April. You know, when we, and when we come to you in the March meeting and we show you and you're aware of the goals, that's where we can identify that if you want to have something, a certain goal needs to be one more information or something like that. If you feel like we're not covering all the bases. At the March meeting, we can also have, because we're going to have goals on some of those other topics. Um, you know, Holly and Noah, for instance, can, you know, they can be in attendance of that meeting that maybe answer some of your questions. If you want clar- the clarification on an action step or something like that.
Yeah. And then another thing is we do, um, have the possibility, like when, if we're having an open house for that later workshop. If we anticipate there are going to be a lot of questions about climate resilience or transportation, we can make sure, you know, someone's at that table, that's a, a subject matter expert. Um, and is able to talk to the public about, uh, those options.
Okay. Yeah, no, I just, I didn't want it to get, I think, maybe I'm overlapping a little with Dan's question as to kind of when this, when that kind of calcification, when that, that plan becomes too solid to kind of introduce new ideas, but I was trying to figure out, you know, when, um, when that sort of exploration can happen. So um, cause we've got, got a lot of great data. I was just curious on when some of that data would kind of hit your experts and come back to us.
Right. I mean, most likely that's going to be in the mid to late March timeframe or early April, but there will be other opportunities. Um, you know, and then, and until we start giving you that information, it's hard for us to know exactly. I mean, we have our, all of our subject matter experts and we don't want to necessarily, you know, just all come and Necessarily, you know, just all come and give all kind of presentations to you if you feel like you know that. I think it would. It'd be helpful if, like, once we share that information, if maybe the nuggets of, like, things that might be most important where you might want further clarification. We could flush those out with you at that time.
Okay, thank you. So those are my three questions. Sorry for taking us off, but.
No, no, that, that's, that's great. We want to make sure that you're comfortable with what we're proposing and. You know, um, where we would be inserting different ideas into the, into the plan. Sure. Okay, so let's see, where did I leave off? So I think we talked about, um, in late April, when we come back together for. A subcommittee meeting, um, in April, where we would talk about the layout of the plan as well as. Review with you each theme and each goal and strategy. The, as well as the action steps. We would definitely want to give you. Couple of weeks to then review it in more detail. We could come back also, you know, potentially virtually and talk with you. If you want, if you wanted to have those clarification questions or comments at that particular time. The, um. One thing is, is also the reason why we're not necessarily giving you like a month or more to review it. Is that, remember, you will have reviewed the different pieces and. As already, you know, like tonight, we're reviewing the community vision and the themes, so you'll be well aware of those and the ideas behind that. In, uh, March, we would be reviewing the goals and the strategies. And then in April, we would be reviewing kind of the action steps and then kind of the layout of, of the rest of the plan. There, and then, you know, at the same time, in early May, we would want to then have that open house or workshop with the public. Where we would, you know, again, as I mentioned already, where we would have people come together and then take a careful look at all the theme areas. The vision statement again, as well as the various strategies and action steps to solicit additional feedback. Incurrence, ideas, edits, those types of things. Um, and then we would, you know, take all the information that we received from that, as well as the comments that we received from you. And then by the end of May, we would have a, um, a final draft plan. That doesn't mean that it's not going to be continuing to be reviewed, but we would kind of have every, everything would be assembled. The only thing that would not be officially assembled at that point would be the implementation matrix. Because usually, uh, what, um, because that's really just a repeat of the action steps. And it's really working, we, you know, we would want to work with you carefully, like in the month of June. Then to, uh, you know. Know that we have the final. For the most part, most of the draft action steps, so that we would carry them forward, because we don't want to do the matrix too soon, in case a lot of things change. But in our month of June, we would want to work with you to, kind of, you know, we would take a first stab at putting everything into the table. We would work with Sarah to initially lay out the entity, you know, who would be the responsible entity, supporting partners. And then potentially whether it's long term, medium term, and then we would bring that to you to review in more detail to make sure that you were comfortable with it. Okay, so then, what ends up happening then at that point is that. Assuming that everything has flowed the way we talked about. Um, we would need to have a subcommittee meeting, uh, with you all in late May. To then, you know, bring together all of your comments and everything that we heard from the community workshop. And have you review the plan and see. To determine whether the subcommittee feels that it's a, a substantial completion, and what we call it is a substantial completion determination. At that meeting.
Is it a formal term soon?
I'm sorry.
Is it like a state defined term?
No, I mean, it's like, I think they kind of alluded to that, but that's kind of like a S L R term.
Okay.
Because you need to basically feel that you, that you feel that the plan is substantially complete, so that it can go into the sixty-five day review period.
Ready for prime town.
Right, exactly. And we don't want to do that until subcommittee. Feels one hundred percent that it's at that point, but knowing that there's still the possibility that there might be some adjustments, especially. You know, uh, you know, when it gets transmitted, there might be comments that we receive, that you want to pursue and make edits from. Uh, you know, the town council, from cog and others. Um, but for the most part, the plan will be in really good shape by that particular point. Uh, and you need to kind of concur amongst yourselves if that's the case. If that is the case, then the sixty-five day period would then be launched, and that would be launched the first week of June. And that would start by. Sarah, uh, through your agreement, transmitting the, uh, the draft plan. To the town council and also to West Cog for comments, and then they have sixty-five days to get back to you. On any kind of comments or to have their own process that they may want to have. You've already mentioned to us that the town council will most likely want to have their own public hearing. Um, but that would be up to them, you know, to determine they would, we would, they would have some review period, and then if they wanted to have a public hearing. It's possible that there could be one in, um, late July. Which is over the summertime, and that may get, uh, we may need to delay if that causes a lot of heartburn with the town council. But we, we can talk about that as the months kind of proceed.
So sir, uh, the town, or our town council has the. Uh, right to receive it and comment, they don't have the right to. Change verbiage. You can suggest it to us, but that's, is that my, what I'm hearing, sir?
That's, that's correct. I mean, the state indicates that the town council or the board of selectmen, in some cases. They can, um, not comment at all. They can have their own process, but they have to get your comments by that end of that sixty-five day period. Um, hopefully, there's, um, a lot of positive comments, a lot of positive concurrence. Um, and, and there may be their letter of recommendation would be for support. Um, you would take that forward to your own public hearing and then maybe suggest any edits that you might want to make based on what they said. If it comes back with a negative vote, um, or a negative recommendation to you. Um, there's different options that you can take at that point. You can either, okay, we agree with you, and maybe you'll go back and make adjustments, or you can. Pursue with, you can proceed with, sorry, with actual adoption through your own public hearing. Um, but there has to be a super majority approval by the planning and zoning commission in order for it to, um. To precede their negative, uh, recommendation.
You say negative recommendation, is that a recommendation on a part of it, all of it, several, like. I like these two parts, don't like these five parts, or how does that work?
Well, the hope would be that they would, uh, say that we give you a positive. We, we feel that, you know, we support the P O C D with these, these comments. So that would be a positive. A negative would be them saying, we do not recommend approval of this plan. And then they may lay out the reasons, but that would be very different than saying, we approve it, but subject to these. Adjustments, or we approve it and we make these recommendations. Um, you see the, like, the difference there?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, but if they reject it, they have to reject the whole plan. They can't say.
Right. Yeah.
They reject this chapter, but all the other chapters are okay. It's, it's an all or none.
Well, no, because I said that they could certainly say we support it, but we would encourage you to make these edits, and we're hoping that those edits would be. It, you know, non-substantial.
Well, encourage is a recommendation that you, we could accept or not accept. Uh, it's different than a mandate.
Right.
I have a question on the, uh, formal state review, what? How's that work?
You mean at the very, very end?
Uh, no, the, uh, begin formal state required review period.
The, the state is not involved at that point, it's just that the state requires that the town have like a pause period and have a sixty-five day review period. So therefore.
Okay.
It's an opportunity for both the town council, we, we are required to formally post it, uh, which we probably will have done in advance. But we will be for, required to formally post it during that period, and we would post it after. Uh, June, or, or we would add to it by adding the implementation table that we would, um. Um, that we would work with you on in the month of June.
So the, the state required sixty-day review period then refers to the town council review and the West Cog review.
As well as public.
Public.
Right, because you have to give the public an opportunity during that sixty-five day period as well. Uh, most towns end up posting it on their town's website or through our, uh, story map. Um, and then we have like, you know, here's the final draft plan, you know, please supply any, you know, please review and supply any comments. Um, we will work with you to consolidate all of those comments that we may receive and put them into. A table or database, um, and that at the formal public hearing. Um, that you would have, which would most likely be sometime in the month of September or so. You know, what we would do at that public hearing is we would, uh, you know, give a summary of all the process that. You know, that, that the subcommittee and the planning and zoning commission went through, it got to that point. We would share all the, the comments or the recommendation from the town council. We would share the, um, recommendation from West Cog. And any potential items for the, that they recommend that you consider. And then we would share comments received from, you know, public.
There's a question process again on the, um, one, two, the, uh, fifth bullet point, sixty-five day reviews. So the reviews and. Received the commentary, let's assume there's nothing too overwhelming in the commentary.
Right.
Then i- i- is it incumbent upon this subcommittee to? Take those comments into consideration, make any final tweaks to the document, vote on it. Saying this is our final draft. And that goes to the full planning and zoning commission, so we would approve it and then send to them for ultimate approval?
This is something Sarah and I were talking about this today, because, because you have a subcommittee which is unique to your town. I'm not really a hundred percent sure of the marching orders that you have been given, so that is something that we need to talk about.
So I mean, like, at the end of the day, as the charter reads, like, the planning and zoning commission has to be the one that adopts it, but it's really up to. You all to decide when you want to, like, do you want to loop in the commission earlier than this? So, or not, so that's something that. We'll have to decide over the coming months, but at the end of the day, the planning and zoning commission is who formally adopts it at their big public hearing.
My, my own sense of things commissioners is that, uh, the subcommittee would determine a final draft. And then we would submit it to the, um, full planning zoning commission for their consideration, and they may make some tweaks. Uh, as is their privilege, and then they would firmly vote on it. That'd be my sense, Dan, what do you?
Um, I wanted to just make one quick comment.
Please.
That would flow very well with that, um, your final determination. Like I said, on that June first, and when you transmit it to the town council as well as West Cog. That could be when you then transmit it to the rest of the planning and zoning commission as well.
And it goes to the public for commentary at the same time?
That's right. Of course, they will have been looked in just pre, you know, throughout, but then it will be posted, uh, has to be posted at least. Um, thirty-five days prior to your public hearing, but we could certainly post it in like mid-June or July, early like July first.
Mr. Collins, if we do that, Dan.
Sorry.
Bounce this off you as, as chairman of the full P and Z. If we do that, th- th- then it would be incumbent upon the planning and zoning commission to. Taking consideration feedback from town council, West Cog and the public. Take that information, assuming it's not, you know, we don't like it at all. To make tweaks, uh, based on the draft of June first, and then the full planning and zoning commission. Would then finally bless it and make final edits.
Well, I, I don't think, it's not going to be a one night affair with P and Z presenting it, right?
I wouldn't suggest it would be.
So I think to, uh, present it to the broader commission. Uh, one particular month, whatever meeting that is, let's say it's the May, end of May meeting, for example. Um, and then, um. Go to the other departments for feedback during the duration of that month. Into the June meeting, and then talk to the rest of the P and Z commission at the June meeting, they've had a month to digest it. The June meeting, we can discuss whatever feedback we've gotten from other departments. We may not even, as a P and Z commission, may not even vote on it in June, might push to July, but at least they'll give it enough time to. Get feedback from the other departments and share it with the commission.
Well, it wouldn't. It wouldn't get fully voted on until September.
By the commission?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's only going to be one P and Z commission vote, there's not.
I see.
Yeah, it could be information sessions, though, in like June, I don't know, are you giving them updates now, or maybe when we start giving you like. Community vision statement, and then like when we finalize the goals, maybe internally you can share them with the rest of the.
Really, it's, really, it's, it's, it's the same preview we're giving to the other departments and, and the town we're giving to P and Z.
No, Sam.
Basically.
And, I mean, we don't, don't forget, we're. You're a group of six, there are only.
We're a majority of the planning and zoning.
Oh, I understand that, yeah.
So I assume we have a fair amount of weight on this.
I think that's fair, that as we have finalized pieces of this document, we pass them on to the larger P and Z. I mean, they, just like the public, can provide comment and feedback, and then.
Right.
Hopefully, by the time we get to September, it's not like, whoa, what is this document, where did it come from? They've been. Getting the updates.
Exactly, we need to give them a heads up.
And I think at a minimum, like in August, uh, when we've, you know, when that sixty-five day window has ended and we've gotten the response from the town council as well as West Cog. Um, uh, you know, that would be really an opportunity, and then also as we're seeing, like, what kind of comments are coming in from the public. You know, sharing that with the full, uh, planning and zoning commission, so you can start to, start to understand like what. Potential tweaks that you want to make to that, you know, plan that you determined was substantially complete in June. Uh, because very, basically between. June first and when you adopt it, you know, we won't make any changes, we'll just be still, you know, so soliciting and. Gathering potential amendments, but at that adoption, after you have your public hearing and then you have your adoption meeting and discussion. Um, in that motion, you want to formally include all of the edits that you may want to make, you know, um.
But wouldn't, but wouldn't then that, uh, wouldn't that then trigger a second review? Um, by at least P and Z, the broader P and Z, including all the edits that may have come in from the feedback from other.
That's what I'm saying, it would be information sessions that you would be sharing with them. Um, we would, you would be sharing with them the comment, uh, obviously, the, whatever comes from the town council would be. In a formal letter, and so that could obviously be forwarded, West Cog will also be for formal.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can, we can, you know, share with them the, uh, database of the comments that we're receiving from the public.
I think it's also good to just remember enough. The plan in general shouldn't really come as a surprise to anyone in the public or town council or, you know, other bodies.
No, of course.
You're looping everyone in at every stage, so hopefully.
Yes.
We don't want to end in shockers.
Well, if I look at this, this, uh, Gantard timeline. The sixty-five day, uh, period burns off, let's call it mid-August. Round numbers, we have a meeting in late August, so it could be discussed then, once all these boxes have been checked. Uh, then we'd still have regular meetings in September, October, the planning and zoning commission, in order to. Make any final edits and get it done, you'd hope before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I mean, our, you know, obviously with what we have laid out here, you would have a public hearing in. Early September with, um, and then adoption would be in September, and then we would deliver you the final plan. You know, by, um. The beginning of October, but if you needed to have a, a little bit more time, or, you know, not knowing what might come up. You, you could push it off, but it basically, you could, at, at the earliest, you could potentially adopt the final plan in mid-September.
If the edits are not too grand.
Right, and you don't feel like you need to go back and revisit something.
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna. We need to see the draft to really understand. How many people are going to be triggered by what's being proposed? That's what's going to come down to.
Right. And that's what we'll work very carefully with you, um, try to make sure that we're. Making the recommendations that you all want to make, but that we're making them in a way that is, um, you know, acceptable by the largest majority of. All folks involved.
Uh-huh, the final bullet point, the answer is transmit to state, what does that mean?
Um, they don't have to review it, but basically after you have a completed plan and it's been adopted by the planning and zoning commission, you. You need to transmit that to the, the state, that final copy. There is a, you know, there's a, um, on the, um, O P M website. Yeah, I think it's for vodka auger that you send it to, they just have to have a copy of it, and they can also check you off that you. Did your update and that it's an adopted plan, so that they have it in their files.
They, they do not have the power to change it or.
That's correct.
Unless it's not good enough.
Not good enough. I assume there are certain.
So they kind of give their authority to West Cog.
To, that they followed that to West Cog, so.
Right.
Okay.
Because West Cog has a regional P O C D, and so. The state has a state plan, but we, throughout the document, we're indicating whether we're, um, consistent with the West Cog plan. As well as the state plan, the state plan is obviously very, um, very generalized, but West Cog's a little bit more specific, and if West Cog. You know, gives you the expected, um, concurrence, um. Then the state acknowledges that and feels that it's, you know, fits within the region. They don't have any other further review.
So one, one touchy subject in town, which is. For many obvious reasons, is affordable housing. And, uh, we've had. Couple of act, or three applications come through last year, this is the eight thirty G statute. Uh, we've recently formed an affordable housing committee here in town. Uh, Krista is on it as well as nine total?
I'm the nice.
Five, five from town legislative bodies, four public on this committee. Um, to help. In- inform, steer, guide the initiatives for affordable housing.
Right.
Whether that's the funding side of it, the site selection side of it, whatever the recommendations may be. Uh, your, your P O C D draft will have an affordable housing component to it, right? A chapter.
And then there will be a discussion in like the, you came in today with all the, you know, the data that we supplied to you and the community profile that will be summarized.
Okay.
And I'm sure there'll be a, a goal or two about housing and then about affordability.
But I think, but I guess what I'm getting at is the goal or two that you're going to have that in there are more general forty thousand foot level goals, rather than anything specific in town. I'm guessing.
The goal will, the strategy might be a little bit more specific, but we'll wanna work very closely with the Affordable Housing Committee.
That's what I'm going with it.
Sure that there are any priorities that they're seeing or that they wanna have included, and that you're all comfortable with, that we would, we could be, we could be specific as long as it's in alignment with what they're proposing.
Yeah, I know, I mean, still haven't had the first meeting yet, so.
The problem is gonna be the time.
Is the time.
Clocks aren't gonna be working at the same time, so I think probably the P O C D is gonna be generic to a certain extent, the way the eight thirty J plan was.
Mentioning that, some, the committee, for instance, is gonna be very crucial that, you know, to continue to support the recommendations of the subcommittee or or the committee. And then also the existing Affordable Housing Plan, which, I know it's not, that's, you know, it's not too detailed, but we, we wanna make sure there's a connection with that too, because the state does require us to make a linkage with the Affordable, you know, the improved Affordable Housing Plan.
Yeah.
In the P O C D.
What else is just in that list of groups, you certainly wanna meet with the housing authority? It's part of the.
I wanna leave that in.
Yeah, yeah. That would be vital, in my opinion.
They've been pivotal in getting all our affordable units built.
Right.
And rebuilt, they're very good.
Definitely wanna mention all that and have pictures too, because I think we have some of that in the, you know, in the community profile already. So that will hopefully flow very well.
Okay. Can I ask, what hap, like, one question I don't think was asked was, so it sounds like P O C D is the, sorry, the West Cog is what I'm trying to say, is a potential conflicting party in terms of someone who can get a throw a wrench into the timeline? Is that what I heard you say, that they would have to comment, because the state delegates their authority to West Cog as to whether the P O C D is in compliance or in?
They still have to respond within those sixty-five days when it gets transmitted to them, so they have to respond.
So if they say, hey, this is junk, or this is beautiful, what is, like, what if they say they don't like it?
I doubt that they will do that, because I think they will be able to prove with to them that the plan is pretty consistent with their goals. They, I wouldn't be surprised, though, if they have a couple of recommendations or suggestions. But I would imagine that they would probably be, you know, what we see, but at the end of the day, you don't, if it's just a recommendation or a suggestion, you wouldn't have to necessarily incorporate that into the final if you didn't want to. Because overall, they would say, we find the plan substantially in accordance with our regional plan, but we have the following six six, suggestions, that's how they'll usually phrase the letter.
Got it, so though, they, they, their commentary does not have any real teeth to it. They're kind of advising us, but we don't have to listen to them, that's what I'm hearing you say, if you're saying that.
I don't know if I would phrase it that way, because I just don't think it will flow that way, because of my experience with the West Cog. I mean, I think it, or with the, the Cogs in general, because again, their, their regional P O C that they have to look at, it should be, it's probably pretty broad, and I think we'll.
It's consistent, and they have a picture of New Canaan on the cover of it, I was noticing, but.
We're the nicest town, so.
We do have to have a summary about that, I mean, the consistency with the West Cog plan will be included. And we'll make a point, you know, very clearly, we're meeting this particular strategy of the West Cog plan with the, you know, with our following goal and things like that.
Okay, so you'll actually write like a custom cover letter to them effectively saying that we've listened to you and we're playing nicely and.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, but there will actually be a chapter in the P O C D that shows how it was consistent, so we'll just point them to that. The, the letter won't necessarily need to point that out, it will be, it will be actually in the P O C D itself.
Okay.
Because there's a consistency with the state plan and the West Cog plan that's required to be in the plan, and that will be one of the chapters.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to understand if that was a potential risk to the timeline, so it sounds like you.
Right, well, again, because they have to respond within those sixty-five days, so. And I've never heard of them turning one down, but I guess that, if you had something extremely radical, like I think if you put that you were not gonna have any affordable housing or something like that, that would be inconsistent with their plan. And so they could probably have a negative recommendation, but I don't perceive that as being the situation.
Thank you.
Hopefully, their, their responses is probably very positive.
Okay.
Okay, what else? Well, I don't know, I mean, I have two anxious waiting folks online here, and I have like, well, hell, what time is it? I've been knuckle for a while, so, you know, with that, I will, if you have any more questions, but I hope that kind of flushes out a lot of the you know, thoughts and that you had or questions that you might have had about the remaining process, that we can certainly, you know, anytime you may have questions or wanna get further clarification, or I will keep you updated as we start going through these processes with Sarah, if we need to adjust anything. But with that, we wanna turn our attention now to the community vision and kind of, you know, you've had a chance to review it, but I'm gonna hand it over to Julia, who's also gonna go through it in a little bit more detail of, just the background on how it came about.
Okay, thanks, Robert. Okay, so the community vision, as you all know, it's really the starting point for the P O C D and all the goals, objectives, strategies and actions should ultimately tie back to this community vision. This is the why for the plan, it's the, who are we, who is New Canaan? What does New Canaan value, and what's the vision for the future of New Canaan? So, this initial, you know, two paragraphs, these are, is the summary of the community vision, so it's based on what we heard and learned from the community survey, the open house, the community dialogues. And, you know, our existing conditions report, and we start with what residents value about New Canaan. So we heard that that includes high quality of life, access to jobs, a really great school system, a rich architectural history, access to open space and preservation of open space, and a host of recreational and cultural amenities. We also learned that New Canaan residents are very passionate about environmental protection, open space and historic preservation, and that you're passionate about planning for the future and being proactive about meeting the goals, meeting the needs of the future. So, that's, that's what New Canaan values, and that's what's really important to New Canaan residents. So, the vision for the future is to meet the needs of your current and future residents, and with strategies that meet housing demands, facilitate sustainable living, provide a high quality of life, and maintain your vibrant downtown and small-town feel. So that is, that's the, the broad overview, and, you know, with that shared vision, this will allow New Canaan to build a future that really meets your, your vision of a vibrant and sustainable future by investing in people and places. So, under this community vision, we've developed four themes that will guide the P O C D.
Excuse me, will we be able to comment on some of the, this draft now, or should we wait to the end?
We can do it now, yeah, I can go back to the, the top.
But I did send your comments to.
You did?
Yes. So that, I just don't have time.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're gonna incorporate your comments, because they were all good, and, but they're just not reflected in this, because we didn't have time to incorporate them.
Just fellow commissioners, my, my comments were some wordsmithing just to shorten it slightly, like any edit, but changed some words from smart development to balanced development, because smart means the other kind of development is dumb development, it kinda sends the wrong vibe. Balance is a little more neutral, but some things like that, also mentioned things like, you know, and playing for the future in financially sustainable and creative ways, since you ultimately have to pay for things, we wanna do it prudently. Things like that, but that type of commentary, but broadly, I thought it was a, a good document. So there were some changes like that, but it was not, I'm gonna call it not a substantive edit.
Yeah, thank you.
So.
Thank you, and, and I did wanna mention too that Sarah had also, you know, worked on this with us and reviewed it. Yeah, thank you so much for your comment, so any other, like, first impressions on this overall vision?
I, I mean, I thought it was, I don't have any specific comments, I read it this morning, and I was like, yeah, that feels right to me, so, good job.
On the second paragraph, I, I I, I mentioned again, excellent public schools, I realize you already mentioned it, but it's a big deal in town.
To keep for the vision, yeah.
Big deals, big deal in town. So, anyway, moving on, so, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so, the next, the first theme area is smart development, which as Commissioner stated, we may wanna change to balanced development. And, that, so the theme areas, as Robert, you know, as Robert mentioned, there are all these state required areas that we need to touch upon within the, the P O C D, so they will fall under these themes, and we'll be really clear in that we're addressing things like housing, open space, transportation, economic development, but sort of under the umbrella of these themes. So, for terms of promoting smart or balanced development, New Canaan's envisioning a future where the need for housing has been creatively and appropriately met, and the housing solutions work for New Canaan. And in the housing development, we wanna be thinking about residents' diverse needs for housing, mobility, access to open space, access to public services and critical infrastructure. And we know that New Canaan wants to go above and beyond in not just providing the basics for residents, but providing enhanced cultural, recreational and social opportunities that enrich residents' lives. Okay, any comments on, on that one? Keep going. And, so.
Can you go back, can you go back to that for one second, I'm just curious, because I we have all these eight twenties that are put out there that basically say, hey, we're gonna do this because it enriches the community, we're gonna do that because it enriches the community, but if, can you go back to the previous one?
Oh, I thought I did.
Yes.
So the last one, these solutions will address residents' diverse needs for housing, ability, access to open space, public services and infrastructure with enhanced. You know, I, I think while balancing, I was just trying to figure out, like, where in that sentence, where in that description do you go ahead and say? Like, basically, we'll pursue housing while balancing its impact on.
Yeah, so that.
Is that implicit in the way, it's kind of the way you're constructing this, that you're kind of putting these different things, they have to be balanced against each other?
Yeah, that, that is the way we were going for it, but there is in the further theme about like, the, what's the last one, preserving New Canaan's welcoming and small-town identity. We do specifically say, like, balancing development with, you know, preserving history, historic landmarks, things like that, so, but that, I think that's a good, that is a good point.
Commissioner, if I hear you, I'm sorry, please.
No, go ahead.
If I hear you correctly, after the word infrastructure, you might insert the phrase in a balanced manner with enhanced something, that might, hearing you correctly.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you could basically put it in there, like, you know, promote sort of grow, smart growth in the context of the other, you know, goals of this, right? So I think, you know, balancing smart growth with the previous, with the, the next one. Because I think the next slide is basically like protecting the environment, right, so it's development conservation. So like, the aforementioned goals shall be pursued, you know, with respect to these, you know, natural goals.
Sure.
So, it should be flushed out, obviously, in the text of the document.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think if we're adding balance to the title, we should also have balance in the paragraph, so.
I heard, I heard you say the landmarks, but that's not anywhere in this promote smart development couple of sentences or paragraphs here, I think it should be, it should be wordsmithed a little, images of a future in which the need for housing has been creatively and appropriately met, and housing solutions have adopted to work for New Canaan. And it's not just about, you know, our residents' diverse needs, housing, mobility, there's gotta be something in there about respecting the existing architectural context of the town. Scale, something about how we manage the development, not just the goal of the development.
Isn't that the fourth? Purpose of the fourth theme.
Yeah, what?
Of the fourth theme, the preserve New Canaan's small-town feel, like.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, but you're making an intro statement here about smart development without touching on any of that. I think it should be added here as well, it's, it's the opening volley as to what we're trying to achieve here.
No, this is one of four themes, so the.
I understand, but it's the first of the four.
Does the order matter?
No.
We could change the order.
Yeah, I just didn't know if the order was intentional.
No.
No. Yeah, we could.
No, so we yeah, we could start with, you know, preserving, you know, New Canaan's mini-character, which, which definitely touches on all these things. But maybe let's circle back once we get through the rest.
It's, it's gotta be an order and a structure that doesn't, the optics of which do not tell our, our townspeople and everyone involved that our biggest priority and goal here is, is the development of housing in town without the respect of the context and existing conditions of the scale of the town, right? It's a really, really hot topic in this town right now, and not to lead with that is a mistake, in my opinion.
I hear you, Dan, I think that, in light of what you're saying, but I think all of these things have to be balanced with that, like, we need housing, but we also need to preserve our environment, we need housing, but we also need to maintain our infrastructure. We need housing, but we also need to maintain our, so like.
I totally agree.
I don't know the order, but I think, I hear.
I'm just referring to the order, because the, like I said, the optics in town, if you're not starting this discussion or starting the, the four themes with the goal of maintaining a, a certain fabric within the town, it's gonna be read differently, right? You gotta lead with that intention, and then all the other things can follow behind. They're all still valid reasons, but I think the last year, what the last year has told us is that this, anything to do with large-scale development in this town is gonna be met with a lot of resistance and a lot of opposition. And we have to convey that we've, we've led with that in mind.
I don't disagree, in, in broad strokes, Commissioner Redmond, I think we want to try to avoid the words or anything reasonable, similar or of, of community character, because that tends to be a no-go. I mean, my own sense for this is I wouldn't say smart development, I've already said I don't like the term, I would say creative balanced development. And it deals with the balance issue.
Yeah.
Because it, not one of these necessarily always takes precedence, but you have to look at all these factors and take each in a specific case and come to conclusion for each case that's presented to you, that's why I say creative, because I like the word creative, and, because I think we're a creative community, and balanced development, because as we have had in any number of eight twenty-four and other applications that you know, Commissioner, you know, it's, the, the P O C D says several things, and it's which one is most important for this particular situation.
Sure.
So that's why I like balanced.
And, and I think they're all very good and noble goals of a P O C D. But I think the overall arching sort of tone of what we're trying to present here, and just something to keep in mind with the entire document, is preserving the character of the town. Right, that, that one phrase can be applied to any one of these themes throughout the entire P O C D. And that is the goal of everyone here in town, right, us included. No one's against development, but it's, people come to this town because of the character of the town, the scale, the context, and the density, whatever it may be, and it's preserving that character that's incredibly important.
I, I don't disagree, I, I think that. the phrase community character is a no go is my understanding.
Yeah, we should not use that word. That's why I think we said small town.
Uh, which I unders- I understand the wordsmithing behind it. I'm I'm not not criticizing in any way, shape or form, sir. I mean, what we could do is is move this, the last paragraph up as far as the first theme. But the last theme is preserve New Canons welcoming small town identity. And we can move that to the first, uh, if if that suits you, Commissioner. And then we could follow with the other ones. And again, I'd say creative balanced developments, not smart. If smart says this is smart and that's not so smart. Yeah, I just don't like the vibe.
I don't have any opposition to the last, you know, couple of sentences, the last paragraph there. I think it's a good way to conclude the mission statement, right? I think we just, I think we just need to whether it's reordering the themes or just wordsmithing them a little bit to add a little more uh importance to maintaining a character. However, we say that.
Yeah, I think right, uh, you know, after your need for housing has been creatively and appropriately met. Uh, you know, it says that housing solutions that work for New Canon, but we can stay with housing solutions that consider, you know, balance the other objectives and things that we value in New Canon, like open space preservation, sustainability, things like that. We can I think that can be added in there, right? Like appropriately met and balanced with the other.
I mean, it's Yeah, um, to Ms. Nielsen's point, I mean, it could be as simple as just reordering it. Take the take the preserve New Canons welcoming small town identity and lead with that. And let the others follow. That in itself accomplishes that.
I'm not against moving the final paragraph up. Unless you disagree.
You have to. I I I would add in it in the the list in the first sentence, excellent public schools, because I think again, that's a big deal in our town. So I would add that as, you know, widespread historic and cultural amenities, excellent public schools and natural beauty is you gotta mention the schools.
Educational focus. You don't necessarily have to say like excellent public schools. I mean, because you could, you could argue that it goes beyond schools into the cultural institutions and like the library, like you know, wave any like, I think I guess I'm saying that you don't want to necessarily rep- re- repeat public schools, so because I think there are plenty of very great private schools in town too.
How about excellent schools and educational opportunities?
Yeah.
Nourishing environment for families.
Okay, yeah, fair enough. Something. Yeah, I like that. No, I like that. Thank you, Commissioner. We got a little bit off the sort of theme down, but that's not fine. That's fine. That's what we're looking for. I I think the, uh, at least on the draft, the um paragraph is, is I'm calling it promote creative balanced development. We've we've talked about adequately. Maybe you can move on to embrace sustainability and resiliency. Um, and talk about that. That's all right.
Sure. Yes, um. Okay, and I, Commissioner, I believe that's you in the photo. Um perhaps going after some uh invasive species, but uh so embrace sustainability and resiliency. Uh, we know New Canon residents are very passionate about protecting the environment, about being uh proactive in making the town more sustainable and prepared for changing climate and climate during challenges in the future. Um, and you know, New Can- so New Canon envisions a future that is environmentally conscious as well as socially and economically sustainable. And that the town will take actions to to safeguard the community against the consequences of climate change.
I I I had a few comments in in the draft. I want to share with my fellow commissioners um that um I took the first sentence, I got rid of that uh semi colon, made it two sentences. That would be simpler, but at the end, after climate driven challenges, I mentioned supporting biodiversity. Often that becomes a bit of a stepchild for environmental issue, but I think environmental or excuse me, biodiversity is an important one. And I know it's something this commission is focused on, and I would suggest that that should be included.
I'm sorry, are you saying, are you replacing something with?
No, it would be. It would be um climate driven challenges and supporting biodiversity. So as an addition. You have environmentally conscious, I said aware, I like aware better, but you know. Um, but towards the end, there's uh two chan- changes I would make. Uh, one is after consequences of climate change, I said um strong storms. This is something that's come many times before us and a lot of the input we received in the survey was losing power because of storms. It's it's a hot button in town and so uh it it also feeds into resilience of infrastructure facilities. So I would suggest that
I would just call it weather events.
Weather events, fine, but something like that.
So you're saying that that's a specific example of the climate change that we're trying to safeguard the community against?
It'd be a comma. So safeguard against the consequences of climate change, which can be a lot of stuff. Um, weather events, which maybe a subset and maybe not, because even if you assume no climate change, there are big weather events. Uh, comma and diminished biodiversity. So those would be my thoughts on that.
Yeah, I like that direction. I do think the last sentences could be embellished a little because resiliency. I think where this kind of leads is some of the discussion we've had about our resiliency or, you know, designing around you know, rainwater and and other sort of flooding challenges, so.
Well, I know there have been comments, I think, before this commit- this subcommittee regarding perhaps um bearing lines, maybe not everywhere in town because that would go too far, but you know, is there some half mile that could be buried that um is sort of the the vital half mile that, you know, preserves fifteen hundred homes, you know, that may be worth the worth it. So again, that's a decision perhaps we can't make, others would have to, but anyway, we can make choices on this.
Well, well, yeah, I mean, in that vein, you meant we say take action. You could argue that I like the word invest better because invest is sort of like you know, the idea that, hey, we we know we're actually gonna spend more money now, but we're actually going to reap the rewards in the future.
How about uh to uh the a community that prudently invests to safeguard?
Yeah.
You like that?
Yeah.
Okay, I like that, Commissioner. Thank you. Good suggestion. Uh, we okay with embraces embrace sustainability and resiliency? Commissioners, I'll take that as a yes. Uh, when we move on to maintain community infrastructure and facilities?
Yes. Next slide.
Ms. Fiori.
Yes. Okay, so this is a pretty straightforward one. Um New Canon has some fantastic community facilities, um including parks, the library, um cultural amenities. Residents are very proud of these assets that contribute to high quality of life. And New Canon also maintains some more, I guess, invisible infrastructure like sewer, uh gas, water and and you tell other utilities that are very important in service, provide services to much of the town. So New Canon envisions a future where existing facilities and infrastructure are maintained and that there's a continued commitment to further improve and advance aging facilities and infrastructure. So again, being proac- proactive and investing uh to meet the needs of the community in the future.
Um, Commissioner Chris, again, I had a couple of comments. Um, at the beginning, you say well maintained, kind of say it's a little boring. It sounds like you have painted. I would say many wonderful community facilities. Like that's fair. Uh, a little more upbeat. Um, also, we're going into theater. It hasn't reopened. I would say anticipated renovated. It's being renovated. So being my view, it's a better word, given what's going on, given the timeframe.
I have no idea, sir. Do you know if that'll be done before this plan? Okay.
I'm gonna I'm gonna bait and I'm gonna take the under on that one. Uh, that's me. I've heard I've heard a lot of things. Well, God bless America. It's um the the other one is um talk sewer and gas. I don't think we do the gas. Uh, Commissioner Benton, hello.
Yep.
Uh, I don't think we we do the gas. I would just say probably sewer, water and other utility. I mean, it sort of covers that. We don't have to list every one of them. And water and sewer are certainly town ones. So I would list those first and just say other. Sort of the town.
Water is technically aquarium, so I I have written this sentence. I meant it just more as like the town physically has these utilities, not that like the town of New Canon.
Fair enough. Okay, fine. You mean they're resident, they're in the town. Okay, fair enough. Fine, I'll take it back. Um, the 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 end of it, I would change because I think there are two concepts here. They need to be split. So I would say this. New Canon envisions a future where its existing facilities and infrastructure are well maintained and where there is continued commitment to replace out of date facilities and infrastructure to meet the current and future needs of residents and businesses. Because there's a difference between we have something that works just fine, we just got to keep it up versus something that has passed its sell by date and needs to be redone like like this building we're in now, like the playhouse, like some other buildings. There's a difference between we just got to keep it up. Great technology works just fine. We just got to maintain it versus sorry, we gotta start from scratch. I think those are different concepts and we need to split them out. And that's what I'm suggesting here.
Yeah, Commissioner Benton here, I would also say that I would change the title then because maintain makes it sound like everything's great. But we heard so much feedback on cell towers, roads, bike lanes, EV chargers, like things that I would see as infrastructure requirements. I think people are gonna challenge the word maintain, saying we want to, we want to see improvements. We want to enhance.
How about um Commissioner Benton, how about like something like ensure community infrastructure and facilities? Because you're like ensuring, meaning that it's a it's a goal to make sure. I mean, first of all, I I one of the big misses here, I think, is first responder facilities, considering we're spending thirty million on a police station. Like, we we don't
I mean, can you say preserve?
So maybe ensuring community infrastructure facilities.
Enhance?
Enhance.
Enhance.
Enhance, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, enhance. That is a good suggestion. Thank you, Commissioner Benton. We're okay with enhance? Take that as yes.
And we can definitely add the uh first responder facilities. Mention that uh right up front. Okay.
I don't know if we can, but I mean, cell towers is probably one of the things that was brought up most in in the public forum. So I almost feel like it needs to be called out in the vision statement.
So uh if I hear you correctly, Commissioner Benton, when we say, what is it? Water, sewer, gas, telecommunications?
Correct. Yep.
Which is, needs a lot of stuff.
I would say maybe communications infrastructure versus telecom.
Fine, fine with me. Communications.
Yeah.
That means internet, that means landline, that means cell.
Well, I don't know if we can realistically say we have a significant amount of
Yeah, that's that's the part that was bothering me. We don't
We don't. Yeah.
Because I think that increase, we're not pleased with the amount we have, whereas we are pleased with the amount of sewer we have.
Right, so.
I think we also I was gonna say the residents are proud of. I I don't think that that clause is all that useful, fundamentally. Like you could just put that and say the town like
You mean delete that sentence?
So delete that clause. Residents are proud of the town's assets and resources, like.
Okay.
I'm okay with dropping this sentence. I'm okay with that.
I just
No, I agree. Thank you, Commissioner.
One word we want to stay away from is the word increase on infrastructure.
I was thinking that too, because I was wondering
Is the word removed?
No, you you mentioned it. I just don't want
No, I just, oh, gotcha.
Yeah, I don't want them to pick up on that because uh
We don't.
That will trigger many other things. Enhance means I know.
Of improving.
Improve is good. Improve. Just don't want to say increase. We'll take that discussion off.
So it's enhanced community and infrastructure, community infrastructure or we're saying enhance.
Enhance, yeah.
I'm okay with that hands.
Hands.
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we move on to the, I guess it's now the final paragraph, but it won't be.
Yes, that's my my first one.
For uh just to follow along, um Ms. Fiori, we turn over to you for a moment.
Okay, uh, so this uh this theme is preserve New Canons welcoming small town identity. So uh central to New Canons identity is that it's a suburban community with uh that's mainly residential with wide head- widespread historic and cultural amenities and natural beauty. Uh, we know downtown is very important. It's the heart of the community and uh a place for connection. So we envision a future where the town's history, where balanced with the need for enhanced development, the town's history, and I should I should uh hold that phrase perhaps, uh balanced with the need for enhanced development, the town's history and landmarks that define New Canons identity are respected and appropriately preserved. Um, and the town will continue to cultivate a community that inspires connections, fosters diversity and provides the resources needed for the well being of residents at all stages. So, you know, I think this, I think this actually makes a lot of sense, a lot of sense to put up front because we're really defining what's important to New Canon, New Canons identity. Um, and that through accomplishing all these other goals, we also want to, you know, preserve preserve the identity, which includes being welcoming uh being a welcoming community that fosters connections and provides for diverse needs.
Yeah, um, as we mentioned before, um I guess in the first sentence, we would say uh excellent uh schools and educational opportunities, I think was the phrase we agreed on. Include there.
And I think we might want to add that, um, was it nur- uh nourishing families, something similar to that, uh or educational opportunities. Yeah.
In keeping with the title, I'm wondering if we change fosters diversity to welcomes all.
Yeah, I like that better.
We welcome all. And it ties into the beginning and so it loops loops it. So we welcome all. Provides resource needed for the well being of residents at all stages of life, all stages, and it's very well stated. Because it does mean all stage- stages, so, you know, including elderly and such. Um, yeah.
What about a residential charm versus residential character?
You dropped the character word.
Charm is kind of a good, but less controversial word.
Why is character controversial?
This estate has ruled that you can't like deny a special permit or something on the grounds of character anymore, like you specifically can't use the word character.
It's, yeah, so we considered like code for like you don't fit.
It's code word. Oh, it's code.
Residential charm, uh, I would, it's fine with me. Yeah. I like it. Residential charm, we okay with that? We got, uh, I guess so. You guys, I get three yes and one guess so, so we'll take
Least worst, Dan.
And Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Benton, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Okay, so it's
So to summarize, we're adding Yeah, we're changing
We are a charming place, so.
Uh, foster diversity to welcomes all. And we're also adding that uh New Canon is known for its fantastic educational system and education opportunities.
Okay.
Um, okay, so I
Can I have one other suggestion? Sorry, for um balance with the need for enhanced development. Um, the town's history or New Canon envisions a future where balanced with the need for invent it's kind of an awkward sense.
How about greater development?
I I said innovative was the word I used.
I'll I'll take that innovative, yeah, creative. We already said creative a few times. Let's use a new word. I like that. Um, innovative.
Development. Down.
And I think a number of the things that this commissioner's mission has passed on development have been very creative, so I think we've
I think it should be, I think it should be and, like, I think it should be innovative development and the town and the town's history and landmarks.
Instead of enhance, would you consider appropriate?
Just think, I think the order of the sentence is wrong. I think it should read New Canon envisions a future where the town's history and landmarks that define New Canons identity are respected and appropriately preserved while balancing the need for enhanced development.
For innovative development.
Or innovative development.
Yeah, I agree.
I like that. It's a good sentence.
Yep.
Commissioner Benton, you'll chop it up, you know.
You okay with that, Commissioner Benton? Well, that's where I was gonna go. It's too chopped up in the front. And I think the way you just read it, Dan, is the way I wanted, that's the way
smoother.
Yeah. If we're okay with that?
Okay.
Good. Good. Okay.
So, okay, so that's 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 the overview of the community vision, and I think the next slide, Robert, we're just gonna give you the next steps for uh where we're going with this. So you provided a lot of comments during this meeting and uh we received some from Sarah already, but if anyone else has some has comments or if you want to redline the vision statement, uh, please send those to Sarah uh in the next week. The vision statement, uh, please send those to Sarah, uh, in the next week. And so once we come to a, you know, consensus on, on the draft vision, uh, we'll be soliciting community input. Uh, which again, we were suggesting to do via the story map, uh, virtual platform. And ultimately, we're working towards, um, you know, a final draft, final draft vision, uh, by March thirteenth.
Sarah, are we taking any public comment tonight? Okay, just asking, asked and answered. Okay, thank you. As we move along with this, we will be taking a lot of public comment.
We do have one final thing.
Yes, sir.
It's, uh, Taylor who's been waiting to speak, she's just gonna, we just have one.
Bless her heart, we want to hear.
Which is the last thing we're gonna do is hand it over to Taylor, just to give you a wrap up of the community profile. You know, where we just, uh, we reviewed that with you back in, in January, obviously.
Yes.
Uh, you forwarded comments to us, and then, uh, Taylor's just gonna give you a summary of. The edits that we made and then so that we can bring the community profiling and some conditions phase to completion.
All right, thanks, Robert. Uh, good evening, everyone, and, um, I'm just gonna kind of summarize the changes that we worked on here. Um, as Robert mentioned, uh, we've been working with Sarah to address all the comments and questions that we've received from. Yourselves, um, on the community profile that we, uh, uh, presented to you at the last meeting. Um, so these comments and questions, um, some conclusions and, 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 uh, action items. We documented them all in a, in a database, um, and kind of categorized if we've addressed these, if it's a pending issue. Um, how we will incorporate these concepts into the plan. Um, so we, we have, uh, a good stock of what we've worked on. And there, there are a handful of outstanding elements that will be incorporated as we move through the draft development of the plan, that's kind of just where they fall. Um, but we have made substantial edits to the, the profile and the, um, existing conditions and resiliency and sustainability reports. Um, and those will be available, we're gonna do one more, um. Internal quality control on it, and then we will get it to you, um, in the coming week. And it'll be available, um, to yourselves as a final copy, as well as, um, we can share it in, uh, the appropriate manner online. For the public to just have access to. So just as an overall summary, um, for the community profile, um, this is a pretty complete, um, or substantial list of the changes that we made. So we have added some longitudinal data to show, uh, population trends over the last twelve years, um. Up to the most recent data that we have in twenty twenty-two. Uh, we've done, we've performed two different population projections through twenty thirty, so that we can, um, utilize that in planning for the future. We've included a bit of an in-migration analysis that looks at, um, using sense, or ACS data. Um, and that looks at who's moved into the community in the last, uh, five years or so. We've further dissected the age groups, um, so we have, uh, looked at, you know, the younger adult population, who has, uh. Which age groups have persisted across the last decade, and so. We've pulled in a, a little bit of additional school data. Uh, we've also looked at some comparison points for twenty-ten as suggested, suggested by the commission. Um, we've added a various clarifying points just to address, uh, questions and comments that came from, um, yourselves. And we've also added various benchmark community comparisons that we worked with, um, Sarah to identify, you know, key elements that we want to be focusing on for. The comparison points. For the existing conditions and inventory, uh, we had some minor updates to the land use data. Um, we added a few additional mapping elements related to the regional plan. We added some substantial information on the sewer system capacity, uh, and, um, sidewalk, um. Uh, and now like the, uh, inventory as well from DPW. Um, we've updated some cell tower information, made some minor edits to the community facilities and parks. Um, we added some substantial data about, uh, groundwater resources in the town to address, um, concerns for well water quality. And we have added some acknowledgement, acknowledgements and identification of invasive species issues within the town. And then finally, in resiliency and sustainability, um, we have, I extended the climate projection reflection to show the full year. Um, and we have added some, um, information and, and context about storm intensity that is anticipated for the region. Um, and so these are like the substantial edits that have been done, but there are some minor ones, um, throughout that are not listed on here. Um, just to add some context or value or additional value to the, the data points. So as we mentioned, this will be available in the next week or so, as we just, um, complete the fine tuning process. And, um, we, we hope that this will meet, you know, uh, substantial. Uh, thoughts and concerns from our last meeting, um, but just know that we do have some pieces that will be worked into the analysis. That is being conducted during our drafting process. Any questions on that?
So when you say the analysis that's being drafted right now, uh, and. One of my major comments was about the lack of analysis in this section, is this section not where the analysis is going, is. The analysis going elsewhere?
So the, the community profile will tie largely into, um. What we call New Canaan today chapter, um, and that'll be presenting, you know, here are, are, uh, the situation we're in right now. And our, our data for, uh, that's reflecting the community right now. Um, as we draft the language for the theme chapters, we will kind of start to dive into the analysis more. So for instance, one of the, um, elements of the comments that we received from you all was, uh, suggestion to compare. Zoning versus land use and how compatible are they at like currently and where can we go with that? Or suggested, you know, a, a density build out, those are things that we would consider, um. Uh, conducting during the drafting process as we're writing and drawing all of our conclusions together.
Cause the community profile is really supposed to be just a data.
Of what else did I?
Yeah.
I mean, I think you guys know I have a planning background, so I'm not gonna go into that again, but in the past, when I've done this, I've done the existing conditions. And then it sort of ends with the analysis where you identify, these are the major issues we see, and then as you get into your vision, your goals. You're addressing those issues, right? So you've done the, you've seen where we are today, you've analyzed. What kind of issues that creates for your community, and then the goals should relate directly to those issues. Sounds like you're doing it a little differently, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to.
I mean, I think some, like, our takeaways, I think, kind of point to some of the stuff that we all agree needs to be, you know, discussed in more detail in the plan itself. That will also lead to, uh, um, the conclusions that need to come for wider, you know, there's certain goals and certain strategies. Um, hopefully that will come out at that point, but I know that, uh, you know, the, the community, the data, community profile is so full of so much data. If, you know, we have to kind of pick the points that we're gonna analyze in more detail in the plan development things.
Trust in the experts.
Yeah, I just, one question that I, every, sorry, I'm just trying to make sure I remember my notes here, one of the notes was the idea of questioning some of the. The housing unit data, I think the notion was, I think we, we, two of the major comments I made was the longitudinal data, for example, like the. Twenty-one thousand, uh, per people expenditure, how does that compare longitudinally across the West Cog reference districts? Um, so I think that's what you're referring to in the longitudinal population data. Um, cause you're talking about like school comparison points.
Believe that was the benchmark community. Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that, is that incorporated in one of the bullets here?
Yeah, so the benchmark communities, we did compare to the schools, um, we compared to. Larger key indicators, housing, um. And, uh, affordable housing as well, um, I believe you mentioned. I'm just looking, I, I have the database open, so I'm just looking through, um, for housing and, uh, uh, numbers that I know there was discussion about, you know, the. The, um, perce- perception in the town versus the numbers from the census, so what we did was we, um, added permit data. From essentially from the twenty-twenty census through right now, or through twenty-twenty-three, I should say. Um, to see if that was going to reflect the change that you all anticipated of some housing growth, and it did in fact. Nothing massive as you can anticipate, um. But that account between the twenty-twenty census and today, um, did address, did tell a different story, so. We did incorporate that and we, we do appreciate that, um, that feedback as far as, um, double checking the numbers, you know, that's what. What we're always looking for with, uh, with the involvement of you all.
Yeah, and, and one of the, one of the to-do items or action items I thought was checking with the assessor to look at the assessed units and, um. Looking at the grand list as kind of a way to gut check your census data. As to the question on the census data validity.
So we reviewed it, like, myself and Stephen, we, um, compared our, because we keep a whole database on permits that we sign off on, so. I don't believe they went to the tax assessor, but we used our data, which I trust, you know, but, um. So I had sent them all the information that we have, um. And it, the census, to me personally, it doesn't really make sense, but I mean, that's what the census is.
Yeah, I mean, if you're talking specifically about the unit count, there was between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, there was, there was a slight decline in the number of units in town. I think that was one of the things that you were saying, you all were saying that didn't make sense.
Yeah, not at all.
We never know exactly, with the census, I mean, it should be pretty accurate, but it could be the way that people are reporting. You know, it, it just, it's hard to say, especially when you have such my, like, low, like, change, you know, like, if you're in a community that. At, you know, twenty thousand new units between those, those period of time, they might be off by fifty or sixty, but you're not gonna notice it because it was such a big growth. In your case, since it was a smaller number, um, maybe there was an overcount in twenty-ten, you know? But what we did is that with Sarah's help and looking at permit data, we actually then looked at it more carefully. Um, and, you know, there is an increase now through twenty-twenty-three, there's like, I think a point, like, two percent increase in housing. Um, with the permits, so, you know, we feel like that's kind of showing that, like, slow but steady growth in housing, um.
Yeah, I think it's a really key point, because it sounds a lot like the difference whether our average age is forty-two years old or forty-three years old, I don't think it's all that consequential. But like, the housing unit count is pretty consequential when we're talking about adding a hundred units or two hundred units or three hundred units. And so I, not to be a stickler on this, but I, I, I do think you really need to sharpen the pencil on that.
Yeah, or drop the data from the census, I mean. The only way you're gonna lose housing count is if people are consolidating properties, you know, turning two or three properties into a single one. Which I have not, other than, I can't think of one. I've been on the commission for thirteen years.
I would see them, it wouldn't come to.
I understand that, I can't, but we don't have.
But again, I've, I've provided the data to SLR, and I believe it's noted in the update that our. Permit data clearly conflicts with the census, so I mean, that we can't, like, we can't change. What has been released by the census, so it.
But why do we have the publisher?
I mean, I guess, I don't, I'll defer to SLR, but.
If we, if we've got accurate data from our permit submissions historically, you know, that's a lot better than. A census worker going around town and getting the door shut in his face most of the time and no one talking to him. Cause that's what happens, is great raw data, that's primary data.
Yeah, why not just, why not just use the tax assessment base, like the grand list?
We're that, we have that information, but assume that's.
And the tax collector knows exactly what parcels are in town, what they're designated.
And can tell us what the growth has been.
Yeah, I mean, the grand list went up, what, twenty-three point two percent this last cycle and probably allocate. I'm just curious and why the, I'm curious and why you're relying on the census data.
Part of it is just that there's a lot of other data that is, that we draw from the census, right, like, you know. Household type and number of units and vacancy and occupancy, and that's all gonna be, you know, based on that, out of that census.
Yeah, but if the census, if the census data can't even get the growth of units or the reduction of units right. How can we, how can we be certain that any of it is right? I know that's a really big question for a different night, but that's my criticism of it.
Yeah, I mean, like, there, there's so many factors that could come into play, I mean, you know, with, you know, with teardowns and things like that, that maybe you didn't perceive that unit as. Not being there, but maybe when the census was taken, maybe there was, you know, we'd have to look at demolition data and like what units were actually demoed actually on April. Of twenty-twenty, um, but again, we're talking about, like, we're not talking about like hundreds of units. You know, we're talking about just dozens of units, and so, I, from my perspective, I feel like we, it, it's still showing a slow but steady growth. Okay, we, we've got the additional permit in from the data, we're not necessarily opposed to going to the assessor and asking for the data, but. We're subject to them being able to supply it to us and being available to supply it to us, you know, because it's their data. Um, the census data we can readily go to, we'd have to work very closely with the assessor. Um, and they would have to be available to, to supply the information to us.
They'll make themselves available.
It's fine, we can, we can coordinate that through Sarah, but we have, we're, 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 our hands are somewhat tied on that too, the town.
I understand, but publishing the P O C D with noting that there's been a reduction in housing units in this town.
We're not gonna, that, yeah, just to clarify.
Like I said, what exactly does it say?
Well, like I said, we made the adjustment, that's what we're trying to tell you, is that we made the adjustment from what the census data was, what was, that was in the community profile that you showed. That we showed you a month ago, because we actually went beyond, you know, we do currently show the twenty-ten and then the twenty-twenty, but now we also show twenty. Twenty-three, and that's with the data that we got from Sarah, that, uh, that is based on the permit review and, um, adjustments. And like I said, now it shows a growth of point two, uh, how, housing units.
Point two percent.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. We took the twenty-twenty number and then we added the.
Twenty-eighteen, so just in one project alone, this town's housing unit count went up a hundred and two units in twenty-eighteen.
A hundred and two because they tore down the, the.
Okay, so they tore down forty, but they.
And then you also have Millport, which happened between two thousand and twenty, twenty, so I.
But again, they tore, they tore down, and I'm, the numbers are rough, they tore down sixty, but they built a hundred, so.
We, we didn't lose fifty units.
Clearly not.
Twenty-twenty, but again, I, I think in the update, we note that, that our permit data does not.
Have to be really clear, because again, when you're, if you're gonna put stuff in there. That is blatantly inaccurate, it's gonna make everyone reading the P O C D wonder, well, is the rest of this inaccurate?
You know, only caveat, like Chris said, says the census is the gold standard, like for future moratoriums and such, we have to use census data.
I wouldn't say the gold standard, it's the required standard.
Sure.
The accepted.
I get it, the accepted, yeah.
And then the text itself, I mean, I think we can explain all this, I don't think we want to make some, use quite the language that you used, because we don't know. We can just say that the town, um, you know, uh, you know, has some questions about the census numbers. Uh, or the number of units in twenty-ten and maybe, and, and the, and the feeling is, is that maybe some units were missed. So therefore, we did an additional study by looking at permit data and that we've now determined. For more realistically that there's been, you know, a, a point two percent growth in the number of housing units. So I mean, I think that's, that would be something that we would definitely include within the text of the document. In the, um, New Canaan today section that Taylor mentioned, which would be like one of the early chapters of the document. The community profile, it does show that number, but again, that's why we're not necessarily drawing any conclusions, because we're just supplying like the raw data. You know, and, and we're not saying, oh, we're flagging it like, oh, there was a, you know, a discrepancy here. Um, we're just sharing the information, but we can make sure that in the, um, the document itself, that that's further explained.
Yeah.
We could potentially put an asterisk, um, next to that, in the, in the community profile before we post it, um, and we could just say that the town. Um, feels that there might be a discrepancy here or something like that.
I think we have to.
And I think, uh, because, you know, we do want your permission to post the community profile, you know, now that we've completed it, we're gonna share it with you. We would like, you know, to get your permission to, and that you want to post it, and that you're ready to post it on the, on this, the project website.
I think we do want to post it, uh, I'm sure we'll get other people who find. Things that are, that are off kilter, which is what you want to do, since we encourage community, uh, input and involvement. Um, my sense is it probably should be posted within the next week or so.
Once you sort of. Share it with, um, Sarah one more time, and then we'll share it with you, and then we'll post it.
That's fine.
And we can make adjustments to it if we, if something comes up and we find it, but.
If, if something, if it, if an unambiguous error is found, I'm sure you'd want to be aware of it and alter it.
Right, and obviously in that write-up, in that particular chapter, there's gonna be detail about New Canaan today, you know, that's something that we'll want you to read very carefully after we. Worked it, uh, and have the pen it is, uh, Sarah, that's obviously why we'll give it to you to review, because we'll want to make sure that you're comfortable with. All the language and all the explanations that are in there. That's obviously why we'll give it to you to review, because we'll want to make sure that you're comfortable with all the language and all the explanations that are in there.
We agree on that? It does, yeah, one's nodding.
Okay. Okay, we're great. Well, thank you so much for giving us.
Thank you.
To go to the schedule and also the community profile. And then we'll, I'm, I'm sorry, the community, um, vision statement, and we'll look forward to any of your comments as we move forward.
Jim, thank you.
Great.
Thank you. It's all a few more items in our meeting, so I think we're done with S L R.
Thank you, everyone.
Go off and do other good deeds.
Well, thank you very much. It's nice to see you and we'll look forward to seeing you every month for the next couple ones.
Thank you for all the hard work.
First, thank you for all the good comments.
Okay, uh, that concludes, um, I don't remember one, the, uh, agenda. I don't remember two, any other business that may come before the subcommittee. Um, I think it was last week, there was a, uh, talk at the, um. Uh, library with Jeff Speck was an architect regarding, uh, various development issues, including many traffic issues. Um, I, I think many of us attended that. Um, and, um. Commissioner Herring and I, uh, were also able to attend the breakfast the following morning, uh, which I think. Expanded on some of the ideas in its first time, so maybe Commissioner Herring, you can share some of your views on, on this.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, it goes down that vein of sort of expert, um, points of view, um, in terms of. You know, opening the conversation to. Um, you know, an outsider's perspective on a town that, um, you know, sometimes when you're in a town, you sort of. Don't see what's in front of you in terms of opportunities, because that's the way things have been. Um, and also just perceptual differences in terms of. You know, human, uh, interaction with the built environment that he is an expert brought to the table. So, you know, for example, crossing with set sidewalks downtown, you know, uh, one of the sidewalk intersections. That was described as the one in front of Greenology here, you know.
East Avenue.
East Avenue and talked about like the, the distance there and. You know, the impact in terms of walkability in the town and the impact on the, the. Store traffic and the impact on that store traffics, you know, um. Impact on those rents and the health downtown, just based on, you know, how the downtown infrastructure is built and how those investments, um.
Yeah.
Can yield a richer downtown that, uh, fabric that will build on itself. He was also, um, very much an advocate of infill development is what I would call it. Um, so looking more carefully. At Locust, um. Uh, Lumber Yard, uh, even Morse Court for infill development that would bring a more, um. You know, twenty four seven, um, you know, walkable, um, sorry, uh, a, you know, a residential. Group that would potentially shop downtown and utilize. He was, you know, I will say that, and I should have probably started with this. He, he was very much a fan of the town as it sits today. He basically commented like, you have a jam of a town, it's naturally evolved and. It's a beautiful town with a, you know, it's not just got great bones, it's got great flesh and all that. So walking around with him and Tiger. It was really wonderful to see the two of them geek out in terms of, uh, you know. How is this signal controlled by the state versus controlled by a local, um, utility and. Looking at ways of connecting. Um, a shopping trip from one shopping destination to another. So instead of having a person park in one location that's a. Stewart Liquors and then drive to, to get something at Chase Bank to park once and then walk from both distances. So you reduce the traffic, you, you have a single park. And, and, and so, you know, are there methods? Um, to make Elm Street, I'm sure it's pretty damn good, but you know, are there ways to look at other sort of connectivities that would. Prevent someone from driving intra-town? The other thing he highlighted was, you know, you have two nexuses in town, basically at the downtown nexus and you have the school Wavine Nexus. Um, school Wavine Nexus, meaning you have South School, Saks, the high school, and then Wavine Park. And there's basically give or take three quarters of a mile between it, like what are the avenues that you can do to kind of. Bridge that connection while maintaining the fabric between it. So he was, you know, saying, oh, well, you know, even though it's a state road, you could potentially put a, a bike lane on that, you could look at. Investing in the streetscape and, and there are all sorts of things that he put out there that. Spoke to, okay, Ways, for example, looks at. The shortest way from A to B, not necessarily, you know, whether it's a highway or whether it's a residential street. So therefore, a town designer now has to take into account that they may want to actually design a given. Intersection to slow traffic down, so Ways actually doesn't route traffic through that intersection. And there are kind of strategies that a given town can pursue. To kind of prevent it from being a through, a through town, because the state basically wants to run. Traffic through the downtown as fast as possible, whereas a local municipality. May want to have people come downtown, shop and stay, um, and their, their different needs to kind of balance there. So on that breakfast. We actually had Deanna, um, the state rep, um.
Tom O'Day.
Tom O'Day, uh, the town council, um. Board of Selectmen, and so a number of these people, as well as the traffic authority, to kind of talk about these different. Intersections, kind of these bigger ideas with a town design. Um, so most of his acumen is really focused on. I would sort of say mid-sized towns, like our town is probably on the lower spectrum of his focus. Like he was talking about, you know, Grand Rapids, Michigan, or kind of like, you know, Burlington, Vermont, or kind of towns that are probably. Two to three times the size of our town, you know, um, but a lot of the, I'll call it the toolkit that he discussed. Could be kind of surgically applied. Um, like he was not a big proponent of spending big on big intersections. He was. Talking to Deanna specifically about, you know, the little bit of paint and a few cones you can experiment with different. Um, strategies to kind of create a, or resilient downtown. Uh, on the kind of traffic side, and then on the, on the development side. He wasn't necessarily keen on sort of having the town develop, um, itself. A particular place like the lumberyard or Locust or Morris, but partnering with. Um, you know, thoughtful developers who would, um. Potentially like optimize the. The sites in such a way that would kind of create a. Potentially a streetscape, um, as well as a, our housing. We talked about structured parking being much less expensive than, um, subterranean parking. So there's just a lot to absorb. I, I sent the video. Um, I, I will say, I'd say the biggest thing about this particular talk was we had three hundred people in the library attending. Everyone from, you know, the, the police commission, the conservation commission, a lot of conservation, uh, the community foundation. Planting Canon, Grace Farms. The library, um, the new chairman of the library was there, plus you had three of the board selectmen. Six of the town council, um, entire conservation commission, four of us. So you had a very broad spectrum. Kevin was there. See, I, I think it was a pretty interesting thing where a lot of people came to me and said, oh, I, I'd never thought about like. Speed is relative to kind of how close the trees are to me and, um, behavioral. Behavioral, like, you know, planners and architects, like, you know, probably think about the built environment and how it affects behavior, but a lot of people. Um, in the room kind of said, oh, these are really innovative concepts and I've never really considered that.
I, I, I found some of the traffic issues interesting. I agree that the, uh. I mean, just me crossing East Avenue at Main is a tricky exercise and that, that block from. Uh, up to the, uh, fire, uh, fire station has been challenging retail wise. And I think a lot of it's because it's just hard to get there, um, and people don't like to cross it light. And I always liked the issue of you actually push the walk button and it works. It's kind of like the closed door button on, on elevators that never seem to really actually be connected to anything. I think they're just trying to fool you. Uh, I think would be, and, and how to redesign that, so it's a shorter walk for people, particularly older people. Um, but you know, the, the slowing down thing, for example, when they designed this building, you know, the road that goes here. It's relatively narrow and there's a huge wall, you don't want to hit and a curb. So you're naturally slowing down because you don't want to hit anybody or hit the wall. And so those kinds of things, built environment can, can deal with that. Um, we only have two lights we control. That's it, uh, by the train station, Elm and Park, and also Charing Park, all the rest are state controlled. And, um, they decide all that. You have to ask Department of Transportation to do something, which apparently is. A challenging exercise was the vibe I got. Uh, Grinch took them over, all the state, and now they have to pay for it though. So if the state owns it. They pay for it, we take it over, we pay for it, so there's that. Um, but I, I, I found the issue of, for example, trying to get more children to, uh, bike to school. As opposed to being the cool kids who always have a drive to school. Um, you know, the cool kid should be the ones who bike to school as opposed to drive to school, in my opinion. Um, and, and South Avenue is really the, the thoroughfare and having something, uh. That is not like, I mean, I was driving up, um, uh, today on High Ridge Road and they have a bike lane. High Ridge Road goes forty or fifty miles an hour and the bike lane is this wide and there's no barrier, there's no way in heck, I'm riding a bike on that. Unless I really think, you know, I've been right with the Lord, because I'm not going to live, it's just, it's just dangerous. And so the idea of having a barrier up and maybe shrinking the road. And having a nice barrier, I'm talking about one of those K rails, ugly things, but you know, uh. Planters with plants in them or some kind of stone that's New Canaan pretty. That is a barrier between that and the bike lane and to facilitate. Transportation, not only down to the schools, but also to, um, the Y and to Wavine, in my opinion, which is. Really determinus of that, frankly, um, was a very interesting, um, interesting idea. I, I think focusing just on redeveloping the parking lots. Because I think there's a sense that if you're using a town, I don't think the town wants to cannibalize it to parking lot unless it's going to be for true affordable housing. Um, which I will say I'm not against, I want to hear what it has to say, but you know, a hundred percent affordable, forever affordable. Done the New Canaan right way, um, in control, under the control of our housing authority, uh, seems to be the, the vibe. Um, but there's also what he didn't discuss, which I think would have been interesting for me is cost and biddy, because we've done studies on this and. There's a lot that could be done in that area and there's also Park Street with some of the buildings there. Um, but, uh, I thought it was, um, an interesting, uh, I thought it was an interesting, uh, exercise and, um. I particularly like some of the ideas on the, um, on the parking, perhaps even if it's a, um. He suggested an experiment for like three months, you get rid of the lights, you do a flashing red. And so it's a stop sign and just, you know, see what happens. Um, also the issue of right and left turn lanes, which I never really thought about up till then. Um, also ti- timed lights was something someone brought up, um, so it's. It's a stoplight until some point and then it changes on a timer to flashing red or a flashing orange. Uh, which we do on some, we do on some, but doing a more of them. Is that a way to go? But, um, I like the idea of actually, because I've been in other. Towns where you push the walk button and it actually works immediately, like we have crossing, um, crossing Wheat Street. The flashing light, right there, you push the button, you get a flash, you go, um. I think that is an interesting idea because it drives me nuts, you push the button and nothing ever seems to.
Isn't the issue that those are state-controlled intersections, so therefore you can't. Change the state's signalization of that intersection just because somebody wants to cross it.
Unless you take it over.
Unless you take it over.
Unless you take it over, in which case we have to pick up the tab, but we already, we control two intersections, maybe we could try those, you know, it's got to start somewhere. You know, let's not make the best of the enemy the good, uh, but I thought it was a very interesting, uh, interesting, uh, and some. The transportation issues and the connection, getting kids on bicycles, riding to school, we have three major schools there. But even, even at those two intersections on Park, is there an acknowledged problem with those two intersections that we're trying to solve?
He seemed to suggest so.
I know there's a lot of solutions, but given our town, given what our experience is, given his acknowledgement that. It's a town with good bones and great skin or how we work great flesh. Are, are there significant issues that? There are a couple of things, a couple of things he suggested, uh, you know, chime in, Commissioner Herring, but for example. On Main Street, which is pretty wide in spots, you could, um. Shrink the travel lanes a little bit and that would give you opportunity for angle parking, which increases the number. Parking spaces you can have on that street and. Lord knows, we want more downtown parking, let's just face facts, okay?
Like in front of, uh, um. The Italian place.
It's, it's really, well, it's really from, let's say, the, um, uh, the Frontier Building on North to, to the fire station.
Right.
Um, that, that section, maybe it's. By the library too, I don't know, I haven't think about that, but you could, some of the lanes are wider than they need to be, so if they're narrower, you're going to slow down traffic. Cause you're narrower, uh, and that way you can, um, have, uh, more angle parking, even if you cannibalize. Parallel parking on one side of the street, if you have more angle parking on the other, you net increase parking. He also mentioned the issue of erasing the yellow line in the middle of the road, you tend to drive more slowly, I never really thought about that one.
Um, don't do that.
Okay, anyway, I'm just saying, these are some of the ideas, but some of the parking issues, that we get more parking. Maybe smoother flow, it just seemed interesting to me, um. So anyway, stop talking at this point, but I thought it was time well spent.
Thanks for sending the link, Chris.
Yeah, the library was kind enough to record it and, and, uh, yeah, the, the YouTube. The group that, uh, underwrote the speaker honorarium, um, negotiated that the recording be. You know, the IP of the library, um, and I, I just also, you know, uh, it was great to see, um. Tiger and Maria attend the event and. And, uh, Deanna, so, I mean.
Board of bed members too were there.
Yeah, I mean, to your point, Dan, it's, there's no, it, it's not necessarily that we have any. You know, hairs on fire issue, but it's more about like, could we do, you know, are there ideas that we? Enhancing, are there enhancing or?
Let's make good gooder.
Yeah, but my point being like, the bike lane down South Avenue for, for kids biking to school. Totally understand that, right? My kids did it from Wheat Street, they were biking through town and going down South Avenue. So that I could see as a really good goal of trying to enhance and improve that pathway. Other things are probably good recommendations, but are we actually solving anything like? Like those two intersections I just spoke about and trying to modify the light sequence and striping or whatever it is. Are we solving any kind of a problem there? Because they seem to work fine. Um, you know, we just have to be, there's a lot of great ideas, we just have to be strategic about which ones we cherry pick to try and implement. Or suggest.
Well, some of these suggestions, for example, those, the two lights we control, you could cone the. Turn lanes, because there's a turn lane on each of those, we cone those, so you don't use them. Uh, you still have the each, you know, both directional traffic and you just flash the lights, so it becomes a stoplight. And, um, you have to do a right turn from.
Have you been in?
Travel lane.
Have you been in New York? Have you been in New York when the, when the signalization fails and they put a police officer out there to try and control the traffic flow?
It can be challenging.
It's, I, I won't use the word that I'm about to, but, uh, i- i- it's a problem. And signalization is there because it works the right way.
Well, I mean, it was basically food for thought is what I came along with and, uh, some, some ideas, um. Some I thought were very good, like the East Amidu Corner, because that's been bothering me for a while. I think his commentary solidifies some of my thinking.
I mean, I think a lot of the concepts, I mean, I think were kind of old hat to Tiger and to Maria, um, I think, I think the biggest gain is probably. Upleveling the broader community and, and being open to some of these changes.
Yeah.
I mean, for example, extending the curb bump outs, which was kind of hard fought by our DPW to get approved. You know. I think a lot of the.
On Elm?
On Elm, for example, and, and I think that was kind of, that was a battle, but I think I would argue that. A person after attending that talk would probably be more open to streeties, street-based dining, for example. I, so I think the talk, in my view, probably broadened people's. I'll call it like availability or openness discussing the topics, which. I think to your point, like not all of them are home runner, not all of them are home runner for here. Um, but it was pretty cool to see a, a planning-focused discussion here and have that broad participation.
Yeah, definitely.
Recommend checking out the video and.
Would like to see it. Our walkability score now is eighty four, which is pretty darn good. So, you know, I'd like to move it up to the nineties, but you know, we.
Well, walkability is quicker. If you have an apartment downtown, like my house is not eighty four, but.
Well, I'm on Ponus and you walk on Ponus, yours is like two, it's about two, you're, uh, fear for your life. I, I, yeah, it is, there are many streets in town that are very narrow, very windy, very hilly and have absolutely no shoulder. And you got to be careful on them.
I mean, a lot of it's not out of our control, I mean, a lot of it's in DP. I mean, a lot of it's not out of our control. I mean, a lot of it's in DPW and kind of the police commission's traffic control is controlled. It's not really our remit.
Right.
True.
Um, but I think, you know, one, Robert was, sorry, Mr. Collins, actually attended the talk. Um, and I think your comment to me was, you know, if if we aspire to having a more walkable downtown, there are certain goals we can put in the P O C D that would have knock-on effects that would support initiatives that the DPW would have.
Yeah.
And so you can kind of put these anchor points in the P O C D
Mm-hmm.
that could be kind of reference points on a compass that Tiger or Maria could point to and say.
I think that's critical.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I I think that downtown is clearly a treasure of this town. This should be, so the neighboring towns, uh, the walkability compactness is a major plus. What we can do reasonably to enhance that, I I would be very supportive of.
Yeah.
Agreed. Thank you. Um, any other comments on that we want to? Okay. Uh, point number three, approval of minutes for the January eighth, twenty twenty-four meeting commissioners. Any comments or corrections on the minutes?
I have not.
Okay, I'll see you next one.
Peace.
Thank you.
No, I I move that we approve the minute.
Do I have a second? Anyone?
I I was in.
You were not here.
I was here.
I was here. With the second.
One second.
See?
Okay.
Tom second.
Okay, Tom's in the second. I. Okay, I think it's uh the three of us. Uh, Commissioner Benton, vote A or N? Yes.
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 Yes, how about yes? Uh, that is it. Uh, adjourned?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourned.